Okay.
Well, I finally got his attention.
I had stopped speaking. I was still staring though.
No, but you weren't paying attention.
I was paying attention to Jan.
Okay. Um, one thing we didn't do last night was go around and introduce ourselves. Uh, there are people watching at home, uh, as surprising as it may seem. The guy that's gonna be sitting here is Jeff Parker.
I can choose myself.
Oh, well, you're standing back there.
I've got the video.
Oh, okay. Well, we'll get to him last. I'm Bill Chapman. I'm Chair of the Select Board.
I'm Tracy Lee Murphy. I'm also on the Select Board.
Owen Cassaus on the Select Board.
Uh, Jan Rosen, Chair of the Budget Committee.
Uh, Tom Murphy, um, Budget Committee.
Stevie Cumbel, Budget Committee.
Peter Johnson, Budget Committee.
Bethy Solinsol, Budget Committee.
Helen Bartlett, Budget Committee.
Sharon Stone, Budget Committee.
Helen Shaw, Budget Committee.
Megan Brackett, Finance Director.
Rick Bates, Town Manager.
Abby Leonard, Harbor Management.
Mike Jones, Public Works Director.
Jeff Parker, Select Board.
Okay, we're ready to go to the harbor.
So, uh, the harbor budget is one that, that took it on the chin a little bit with the, um, as Abby was quickly to point out to me. Well, she was out, so she couldn't defend herself, so, um...
That's great. I'm here now.
So, the harbor budget, uh, took it on the chin a little bit, largely due to the fact that we do really well with the harbor with, um, reserve funds. So, a lot of, there's a lot of reserve money that goes in and a lot of, uh, repairs that need to be made in the harbor that, you know, there's, there's things in the harbor that just wear out because of the, the weather and the ocean and everything, so... But there were a lot of cuts in her budget that are, um, we just, just made. There are many of them are in red. They're ones that I'm not happy making, but it's, uh, in order to meet LD1, we had to take these kind of drastic moves. My hope is that you will see your way clear to put many of these things back in. But as we talked yesterday, it's all about the LD1 piece.
Ken has some notes that he's provided me. They all deal with the revenue. Um, the very first one, the boat excise tax. He's wondering if, uh, like the automobile tax, that might, maybe should be going up. Um, we're holding it steady from last year, but last year was, we budgeted, uh, almost $2,000 less than we had received. I know it's hard to estimate that because most of the excise tax comes in, in the next three months.
Right, and we, I think we are doing better at, uh, at collecting excise taxes. Is that correct? Yeah. We're doing a better job at collecting at excise tax. And I, you know, when we did this budget, um, is excise tax coming in now?
Yes.
Yes. So, we may want to rethink that as a means of, of getting our numbers to match as we get towards the end.
Okay. Uh, his next item was online, again, uh, revenue 809, um, talking about, what was that one? Overnight docking. And he's wondering if maybe we shouldn't bump that up a little bit more now that they, as he puts it in the, in quotes, "The word is getting out."
It's, it, the potential is there for more revenue. Um, there certainly is the potential there. $7,000 for 200 feet of dock space is not a whole lot. Um, the risk is that if we bump it up and we don't make it, I mean, we should do better.
We already have.
We already have done better. We did better last year than we expected. We budgeted 6,000. We doubled it. We budgeted, we budgeted six and we brought in 6,244. We bumped that up to seven. Um, it may be something that's worth a risk of going up another thousand dollars.
Does that revenue, the increase, are you expecting more boats or are you raising the price?
More boats.
Keeping the price the same.
We're keeping the price the same, and plus, they did some other work. Uh, they made some changes in the, um, in the rent, the way people can access the docks, so that now there's a little bit of incentive for people that, that actually have boats in the harbor, or they're, if they're resident or if they have a boat in the harbor, if the float is open at four o'clock, is it four o'clock? If the floats open at four o'clock and they don't have a reservation, that they can come in for, is it half price?
Yep, it's a dollar.
So, it's better to have boats on the dock and paying something than having empty docks and pay, you know, expecting, you know, two, two dollars, is it 2.50 a foot?
Two dollars.
Two dollars a foot?
The, the half price is only for residents?
Residents or people who have moorings in the harbor.
If you have a mooring, yep.
And, and so at four o'clock, if nobody's, if nobody's booked the space and they want to come in and spend the night, um, they can do that. And we're hoping that that will generate some more revenue as well, and more local use.
Interest and, yeah, keeping the docks full.
Keeping the docks full. Empty docks don't, don't really, people come down to the park to look at boats and, you know, if the docks are empty all the time, it's, they, they have to look out at the boats way out there. What they want to do is come down and look at the boats and be able to talk to people on the boats and, and our goal is to fill the, make the docks filled.
And Ken's last, um, item on the revenue is line R819. That's the, um, winter storage. I noticed that we've taken in some, almost 7,500 where we had budgeted 7,000 for this winter. Uh, we still have the budget at 7,000, but he thinks that maybe even we should be considering increasing that rate, um, that maybe we, you know, instead of what, whatever we're charging now, we should bump it up 5% or something. He didn't say that, but, you know, should we be considering bumping it up?
We are very, that, that rate is very low there. Um, it's a really, it's a really inexpensive, uh, stor- storage.
But that rate also comes with some...
Yeah.
With, with some caveats and some limitations that you wouldn't have at other places.
Right, right. It's pretty, it's a spot. It's not, there's no power. There's no water. There's no...
Well, I would question that no power. I see yellow cords running all over there.
There's not supposed to be any access to any power. People get very creative, but that's not what they're technically paying for.
Okay.
Stevie?
On the, on the cuts, um, a couple of things. One, building repairs and maintenance is kind of a sore topic with me all the way around, and I just wonder, Rick, in terms of cutting that from 2,000 to 1,000, or Abby, we've seen what happens when we let repairs and maintenance go.
Right. Oh, I agree. It's...
And I, I just wondered how critical the repairs and maintenance, it doesn't seem like a huge amount at this point.
But just judging from the fact we haven't spent anything to date on it.
Right.
And the note also said it was for garage door opener? Oh, that's right, too. That's right.
Right, and the, and we haven't spent anything to date, sorry, just, um, it's going to be, the, the 2,000 we have budgeted for this year is for, um, trim, outside trim on all the doors, just replacing that with a little more of a marine in, you know, a, a, not wood.
What's that stuff?
The AZAC, the...
AZAC Versi-Tec PVC trim?
PVC, yeah. So, that'll hold up forever, um, and replacing that. So, that's gonna happen this spring, so that will be spent. And then the 2,000, um, the garage door, you have to, it opens, you know, partway, and then you have to shut it, and then open it partway again, and shut it again, and open it partway. Um, so it definitely needs replacing, and that's probably gonna take all of that, would take, you know, I think we looked at it a couple of years ago and it was 1,800, so, or 16 to 1,800. So, that was the cushion that I had budgeted.
And then the other, the other one I wondered about, heading, was the safety gear, and I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, uh, how critical...
Right.
To replace the buoys that, the ring buoys?
The life rings. They have, they're definitely at their, their, you know, the, the UV rays just break down that, that line, um, and it's required that we have to have them every certain spot. We have to have one on the boat and a number on the head wall. Um, and now we're getting more floats, so I would think we would need a couple of more of those as well. Um, and then flares and things like, you know, that just, you have to replace, I've never used them, but you have to replace them every year, and I noticed that they were up. So, just things like that, that would...
So, yeah, I'm not, that was something that stuck out to me, too, and I'm directing this towards you. Is there, like, a way of trimming a little bit off the food supplies so safety can have money? Just throwing it out there or something?
That, that, that could also work. Um, it was just a matter of, of trying to find places where we're doing something different and adding something in that could, we could cut, um, that, that was a big increase, and we, I just looked at trying to keep the increase pretty much stable. And one of the things is the, um, where is the works gift? The works gift, we did some evaluation on the works gift that I cut out. Um, we, because of, um, the staffing and, we have some money in the budget that we may be able to buy the works gift this year out of this year's budget. Um, we, you know, we can also talk about buying the works gift or the, um, uh, the door out of the budget, uh, this current year's budget, because we have a little bit of surplus because we...
I had a baby.
You, yeah, okay.
Frankly.
The things that you do for your town.
Right, it does, it does pay somehow.
No, no, no.
So, we saved, uh, saved a bunch of money in, in salaries, in wages, so we have some money in that budget. So, as we get closer to the end, end of the year, we can start to figure out where we can potentially get some of these things out of the end of this year's budget. Yep, Jan?
The life rings that need to be replaced. Did I hear you say that it's the line?
It's the line and the rings themselves. They're really getting dingy looking.
Is there such a thing, I'm sure that they spend much of their life sitting unused.
Correct.
Hopefully, all of their life sitting unused. Is there such a thing as a quick cover, quick release cover, something that can protect them?
There are.
Bags, don't they?
They have actual units that go on the floats that I've looked at. They're quite a bit more expensive. They don't lend themselves to being taken so much. I had, I had really nice ones that said Rockport Harbor. They, they took, they grew legs and left, uh, left us. So, we're, we're using a little more, leaving them a little more, you know, not so flashy. Um, but that is a good point. I mean, I would love to see the actual units on the float that are encased so that they don't get, you know, um, I try to, as much on the boat as possible to kind of keep the line hidden, but they also have to be available, so they have to be, you know, right.
Yeah, no, I'm without interfering with them.
Right, right.
Building, building on that, if you were to buy the more expensive one, does your replacement timeline get elongated? So, instead of replacing them every three years, if you buy the better one, you don't have to replace them until every five years or something like that?
Right, definitely. Yep, yep. But they would...
That's from a practical standpoint, not from a, a legal...
And that was my legal...
Flares you have to do.
Correct.
Flares you have to do.
Correct. There's a, right. That would be more of a practical, okay, look at the line. It hasn't been exposed to the sun, so it's not gonna break down. It's not, you know, the whole, the whole thing. Like, the ones that we have now, just, they're, they're past their prime, they're done.
They could be used for the New Year's Eve celebration.
Sure, we could, yeah, sure. Dog toys or something.
And just to plant a seed for this review process, next year, you may find yourself in a position to recommend the LED flares that have just been, been made, the last couple of weeks have just been made legal, and they don't have replacements.
LED, I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah. Kenbow.com.
Oh, okay. Didn't know that.
Yeah.
On the... And LEDs into the harbor?
The piling replacements?
Emergency piling.
We've been going along at a really nice rate of replacing a certain number every year. Um, I'm in favor of keeping that up, um, so we don't start falling behind.
I am, too.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I mean, we're, even, even with that number, the original number before the slice, um, we, we'd still be, you know, playing catch-up.
We have a bunch going in, we have a bunch going in this spring.
We did.
Yeah.
We bought...
We could use double what we have.
It's falling behind a little bit, but they're just going a little fast.
We bought a, we bought a, how many of them last year that...
Twelve, fourteen, yeah.
So, we have 14 going in the spring.
Yep.
I thought the, I thought you were aiming at like 15.
We are. It's, it's hard to, it's, basically, you know, you go out and you look at the pilings, and some of them are just not worth the $100 they cost to get, you know, so you get as many as, as are workable with the size, and it's hard to, the diameter changes so much, and you don't want huge, and you don't want tight spindly. So, getting that in between, you know, it's pretty much whatever they have available at that point. But I have a couple of leads out for some, some more coming. Um, every time I go for a hike, I look at straight trees and want to cut them down.
I have one, um, uh, under supplies, line 5205, the heating fuel. Rick, did you reduce that down because of cost of fuel or because of efficiency? I'm just curious.
The co- the cost of fuel?
Okay.
And the volume, the, um, how many gallons we...
We did our bid contract early this year. We don't usually do it until after the budget has already been done, so we have our contract price back, so that's our contract price.
Okay, that reflects...
My only question, I was like, goo, you're like cutting or slashing the heating budget, like, can you even do that? Like, but...
I don't like, I don't even turn it up. I sit down there.
She's not pregnant anymore, it's okay.
So, hold on a second. We can tell you exactly how many gallons of fuel.
The harbor uses 1,100.
So, it's 1,100 gallons of fuel at the new contract rate. So, that's what it comes in at.
Wow, that's a good rate.
Yeah, what's our rate for...
A dollar forty-three.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you do the math on that, it's pretty, pretty low.
Yeah, it came down to, was, was there a penny difference between the final bidders?
Um, they, when they bid, they have two options. We can pay it all upfront or we can pay monthly. Um, the, the option that we chose won significantly, but if we had gone to the next option, it was a matter of 10 cents.
10 cents per gallon?
Yep.
And is that same formula spread across all the different buildings, so all of them are reflecting that same, okay?
Right.
I had another one if I could. I'm sorry, I'm chatting Kathy.
Well, John's not here tonight, so...
Yeah, 0824, under revenues, the River Dinghy Dock. I'm just curious why you're projecting no revenues, whereas two years ago, you made almost $2,000. What?
Yeah, that money gets, it gets put into, let's see. I did, for a reason. Um, yeah, that is an oversight. And I think that what was happening for, uh, at one, at one point, is that they were being, rather than being separated out on the finance side, they got, um, it got tied into tie-offs, and we had eliminated a couple of tie-offs, so it sort of all kind of came out in the wash. So, I think that was what was happening, but I would like to see...
Is it possible that's someplace else?
Yeah, that, that was my kind of follow-on. Where did it shift to?
I didn't increase the tie-off line at all, but I think that's what, um, I had eliminated some because they were just getting, it was getting so tight in there, and the river docks are substantially cheaper than the tie-offs, so it kind of came out. But we could certainly put it back there, and I could just, we'll just do a better job of, of, um, tracking what that is as opposed to the, the, which I would like to see, too. So, like, so, we could put that, I think we could easily put that 2,000 back in there. Or the, yeah, 2,000, yeah. Cause let's see. Yeah, I'd like to put about 15 boats in there, so obviously, I'd put a few more in other years, just because we could. But the 15 is a good number to put in, so if we put in 1,500 in there, that would be, that's totally doable.
Is that a similar, just like a kind of general oversight with the soda machine revenue?
The soda machine, we just haven't had one.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where is it anyway?
Yeah, because we had a food, we have the food truck now, so we...
Oh, does she come in here for revenue? Is she on here somewhere? Where does her money go to?
It comes under rental.
Park rental fees?
And then, um, she also gives electricity reimbursement.
Oh, cool.
Abby, under revenue again, too, um, refresh my memory, why 1314 Boat Club lease income was 6,900, then it jumped to 13,000. 6,500 was budgeted last year, and they still haven't paid that lease, even though we're what, a few months, just a few months from...
I'm guessing it probably is the way they paid.
They paid twice in that one calendar year that worked the fiscal.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Is my guess...
That is what, that is what happened. Cause I remember looking at it, wait a second, we have it, but they, they're on the calendar where our fiscal, so. But they're still at the 6,500 for the year, for their lease.
I, I think it would be, you know, helpful if we split out Fox on the Run's rental from just park rental.
Okay.
You know, you know, cause, you know, what we're...
Call it vendors or something. We could call it like a vendor concession.
Concession rental, whatever it is, as opposed to, oh, this is the big tents.
Right, and weddings.
Would like that, that French ice cream, the shaved ice, would that fall under it, too? Don't the, doesn't, uh, Heron put out some sort of ice cream?
They did, yeah, yeah. But they do it as part of their, and they pay the peddlers. That's the thing, because it comes, it kind of gets, it's the differential between the peddler's permit, which goes to assessing, which goes to code, or it goes planning. Um, so that's a little bit different, and it's like a dollar seventy-five a day or something, but it doesn't get put right into my budget. It's, they have to get a permit to pedal for the town, and that goes to, into their revenue. Um, but with the Fox on the Run, we charge them a different rate for being in the park.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Any other questions on harbor?
Uh, I had one last one, the mileage stipend, though. I mean, it, it makes sense why this year and not any of the previous years.
Well, the change I made was, um, is to just give Abby a stipend because her mileage is so, um, so small. It's typically driving from the harbor to the office and back again, and keeping track of that is difficult, and she probably doesn't submit for it, um, and instead just gave her a flat stipend, um, for...
That means 3105 went to zero.
Right, and the, and so it became a stipend, that she just gets a flat amount of money every year, because she, we don't have a vehicle for her, and so when she goes to the store, when she goes to the town office, when she goes anyplace, she's using her own vehicle. And the, the challenge is for people that use their own vehicles is that you, it's not just writing down the date and the miles, you have to write the starting miles, the ending miles for each trip, and it's, it's, it's a challenge.
A lot of pictures on my phone of the start, finish. I try to remember what I did in between those two pictures.
I'll let work for eight miles here, seven miles there, two and a half miles. It's just not worth it.
Point five eight to the town office.
Right, yeah, no, I don't, I don't submit any of those.
If that, so. Do we have it? Okay. Parks and Rec.
Okay, Mike, you're up. Can you guys switch?
Thank you, Abby.
So, you're what, you, you don't have to stick around yet. Yeah, you gotta stick right, I'm gonna pass that along you now. Yeah, you're televised.
And, and archive so your kid can see it 25 years from now.
But you do get a gimme after the last one, so. So, Parks and Rec, uh, the places that, you know, again, it's, um, uh, the capital item, the, the, um, the big one for the ca- for the Parks and Rec, um, that, that was...
Mowing.
Well, that's the reserve, right? Parks and Rec, right. The harbor block, harbor block wall is the $25,000 estimated block wall that will go down where the boat storage is to move the toe of the slope back and create more parking there. Um, we've talked about that a couple times, but that got cut out. Also, the money going into the reserve of $6,000, which is to pay for, um, and up, to rebuild the tennis courts, uh, which they sorely need it, but that will put that back another year.
Which courts?
The tennis courts.
March Jones?
March Jones, yeah. They're in very rough shape. Um, to the point, I don't know, I, my guess is people aren't using them because they're, they're so bad.
Is that entire reserve, which I see, I think this is the 58,000, how much is it gonna cost to get that ultimately fixed?
All of that, and, and then probably more.
I mean, a lot more, a little more?
That's something I'm starting to work on.
Yeah, I mean, is it gonna be a hundred thousand dollars? Is it gonna be 65,000?
No, I think we're close. I think we're, I think we are close to getting it, I think we're close, but, you know, particularly with asphalt prices the way they are.
Are you call, are you talking about the, the tennis court?
Yeah.
Hundred thousand dollars for a tennis court?
Uh, they, they, they can be 60.
Well, we discussed this before. I mean, you have to take out all the fencing and the posts, and take it all out, and then put it all back in, then put all the fence back.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think, it boggled my mind last year. It boggles my mind this year. I would say no. That's just...
It's not cheap.
It's all in my mind right now.
So, we're close.
We're close. Uh, Mike is gonna get prices for that. Um, you know, if the, if, you know, if companies are hungry for the work, they may bid it, they may bid it, it may come in cheaper than we expect.
But to Jan's comment, I don't, we're not putting the whole 60 aside this year. I mean, we've built up to that.
I know, we're not, I, I understand that, but, I mean, this is the, the 6,000 that's been pulled for this year.
Right, right.
And I'm, I'm not gonna rush to put the 6,000 back.
Right.
And then my other question is, is how often does it need to be done? Because if we're just putting 6,000 in and it's 60,000 to fix, and it only lasts for seven years, you do the math and you're short.
They should be good 15 or 20 years typically.
Okay, so this is a long term.
And, and typically, I don't know what's going on there, but typically, if they're, if the base is done right and everything's good, you know, they put the asphalt in and then you do a re, you know, a, basically a shim and overlay or seal coat, and, you know, you can get longer years out of them. The problem is, we've got some significant cracking going on down there.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, and so, um...
And the, uh, the guy that opens and closes the park.
Bob Haw.
Bob Haw, thank you. Uh, wrote us a letter last year listing the deficiencies, and it wasn't just to the tennis courts and the, and the basketball courts, but there were the fences that were down, or gates that weren't functioning, and backstops and things.
We've done, we've done a lot of the small repairs that have been taken care of, but the big ones are gonna be the courts. And we've been talking about this since I've been on the board.
Well, because you put money away for a long time.
Yeah.
To get to 59,000 dollars or whatever you have. Um, and the challenge is, the bigger the cracks get, the more water gets in there, the more...
Frost affects it.
Frost affects it, and, you know, they tried to put, um...
It's been sealed and cracked.
Sealed and filled in, and the cracks have been filled in, but then they just keep opening up again, and more water gets in and causes them to crack even more. So, it's, it's really, it's like a road. It's a full, at this point, it's, it's almost like a full depth reconstruction, that you have to go in there, grind it all up, repack it, come in with new, a new surface. Um, so...
Question about, I know that Parks and Rec has been collaborating with Camden. What is the status of the Snow Bowl tennis courts? Is there any word on those being redone? I mean, any conversation around that?
They're not at that level of discussion.
Okay, thanks. Rick, no question. Uh, on line 3630 on mowing, you've got 22,250 on page 138, but over on the explanation, it says it was decreased to 19,833. Is that a typo or...
On the explain, where?
Line 3630.
Right.
Over on your explanation page, it's a different amount.
Oh, the back page?
Yeah.
It said it came in lower than...
That's the contract amount.
Okay, so the 22...
It was updated to meet the contract.
Okay, so the 22, 250 should be the 19833.
No, the 22, 250 is the contract amount, correct? The 19 is the wrong, is a wrong number.
So, that's wrong, okay.
Oh, so, so the number on the 2225 is how much it's actually going to cost, and the mistake was on the supplemental part?
Supplemental page, yeah.
Okay, then I have a question, because if you flip over, unless there's something I'm totally missing, like you expanded what they are gonna mow, if you go over to the cemetery's line item for mowing, it was going up and then down, so it went 40,000, 43,000, then 42, then 41, and still maintaining at 41.
Isn't that, that's in the backup information?
Nope, that's in the cemetery's...
Budget?
Line item budget. And so, I'm just wondering, can you use the same vendor for cemetery as you do for parks?
They're all bid.
It's two separate contracts.
Why did it go up in one but went down in the other? I'm just a little confused because it's a big, it's a big number item, and in one... I'm just a little confused, because it's a big, it's a big number item, and in one, in one level, the trend is going down, and then in the other budget line, the trend's going up.
I would think that comes up.
I, I think it, this, this fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year is the last year.
Right, but his question is, why would the contract go down in the third year of the contract?
For cemeteries, it's been going down.
Right.
But for Parks and Rec, it's been going up.
And it's a different contractor, it's Claybrook for.
Claybrook?
Not, not.
No, but Farley's.
That's two separate.
Yeah, Farley does the cemeteries, I know that, because I spend a lot of time in the cemeteries. I know they're doing at least Rockville, West Rockport, I don't know about Sea View.
Right.
Um, what's the other hill, um?
Amstey.
Amstey, Amstey Hill, do they do that? I'm not sure.
Yeah.
I think Farley, does Farley do that one?
They do that one.
I think so.
Yeah.
I think Farley does.
It kinda made sense when I was seeing that nineteen thousand dollar number as, oh, okay, we're starting to get a good deal here, but then if it's back to that twenty-two, I just see one trend saying it's getting cheaper, and one trend saying it's getting more expensive.
This was wrong, right?
The, the nineteen, yeah, the nineteen is wrong, the nineteen is wrong. So we're gonna have to get back to you and get, get that information, we'll check the contracts.
Right, oh, and then the pathways, do we wanna talk about pathways?
Oh, yes, absolutely, that's a mistake, the pathway should be in there, and.
Which is a, a seven-five-two-five.
Yep.
So five thousand should be in there?
I think here, this was a new contract here.
And then probably a red box cut for LD one. But it should have actually been in there in the first place, and then cut out from the LD one.
So it, it, that was the intent, that the Harbor Walk, uh, was going to be in there, and somehow it got missed, so.
Okay, say that all again.
The pathway reserve, I thought is what we were talking about.
I thought it was pathway.
I'm sorry, I, I said Harbor Walk, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Pathways re, reserve was supposed to be in there at that, um, what line was it?
Seventy-five twenty-five.
Seventy-five twenty-five. So there was supposed to be five, five thousand in there? And then I would have removed it.
Yep.
As part of that, which.
Which is understandable, and it's something I can explain to pathways, but just not even having it in there, that's gonna fall on me, they're gonna get pissed.
Or when you get into the discussion is, you can say, you know, there are things that you wanna put money in, you may wanna put some money in there, um, you know, just so we continue some momentum going.
I just, that number was something that we voted on, right?
Yeah, yeah, and it should have been in there, is, is, um, it should have gotten in there, that was just a mistake. So, uh, Megan has the answer on the, on that.
So, the cemetery started a new contract fiscal year fifteen, sixteen, so the contract is a steady, steady price, it didn't increase fiscal year to fiscal year. So the forty-two nine fifty-seven for fiscal year fourteen, fifteen, is where the previous contract ended.
Uh-huh.
The new contract started fifteen, sixteen, so that's why you see the number going down one year and staying the same this year.
Okay.
Okay.
So we bid it out, and the bid came in cheaper than we were doing before.
Correct.
Because we're bidding everything now?
Yeah.
We, well, everything, but all big contracts, we bid out, and depending on people's eagerness to work, we're getting bids that are, uh, cheaper than sometimes we expect. We've done very well with, with getting things bid.
Cost to, cost to gas, I don't know how much they project out in their bid number. I know gas has fallen recently, so maybe that's helping.
No.
No.
I was guessing this one.
This one's for you, Bill.
Yeah, but then going back to Parks and Rec for the mowing on that, that's a separate contract.
Yes, there, it's a separate.
Now, is that one in the third year?
I believe so.
I, yeah, I believe it is.
I thought they were all sort of on the same schedule, but.
Go ahead, Mel.
In a sense, I would imagine it's probably to our advantage to have those staggered, in terms of, rather than you, you, if you start all of the sort of outsourced mowing and that sort of thing, um, all at the same time, and everyone's thinking the same gloom and doom, or positive either way, it's probably better for the town to, to have that, so I, I would.
We ju, and we just rebid the sidewalk clearing contract, and I don't have the exact number in my head, because we just did it today at two o'clock, and the bid, I, I believe, came in a little lower than last year, at the, our last three-year contract. So it, it came in slightly lower than that contract, not a whole lot, but a little bit. But we're, we're seeing that across the board with bids, that, that many of our bids are coming in lower than our estimate. Our, our expectation is the Mill Street Bridge is, um.
Be lower.
It will be lower than we expect, which is good news for us, um, of getting work done. Yes, Jen?
We, we spend a lot of money on mowing, and I'm wondering if we could go an extra week between mows and change the contract specs next time they're out for bid?
Uh, the, the complaint we'll get is, uh, we get complaints now that, um, the grass gets too long, and, um.
Are we losing children?
Well, for playing baseball, for playing baseball, um.
So that I understand.
Right.
But a park or a cemetery, I don't understand why I can't go another week. Mike, can you help?
It, it could, but that is something we get a lot of complaints on.
I'm amazed.
It's according to, you know, rain and weather, but.
So people have nothing else better to do than complain about length of grass.
And their, and their property taxes.
And you wouldn't believe how much they complain.
They do, they.
Oh, I work in customer service, I believe it, but yes.
And cemeteries is, is one that they complain, yeah, that's emotional.
Yeah, but even the parks get a lot of complaints.
Yeah, right. Yeah, the ball fields get a lot of complaints.
Him too.
And the, it, there's a rationale for the, for the ball field, because you hit a ball and it's a ground ball.
No, no, I have no problem with the ball field, I understand that.
Even in the cemeteries, it, the challenge is that the biggest growing season is in May and June.
Yes.
That's when it grows the most, and that's when everybody goes to their gravesite and, to see, and, you know, they expect their, their stuff to be mowed, and, um.
So front, front load the mowing and then slack off later in the summer?
Yeah, you know, grass is a cool weather crop.
I, I think the way.
It grows May and June, and then it grows September, October.
I think the contract doesn't, does the contract have an, an inch height?
Oh, it used to.
I would have to look.
Yeah, for some reason, I think.
It used to.
For some reason, I think it has a, a height requirement. So in the spring, when they're, when they're, when the grass is growing faster, I, I believe, they, they have to mow more often, and then as the summer goes on and the grass slows down, they don't have to mow as long, as much. We have a similar thing with, with the snow contract, with the sidewalk contract. It requires that the, if during business hours, when there's an inch of snow, they're supposed to start shoveling the sidewalks, you know, during a normal business day.
Who would I see to look at the contracts for the mowing?
I have them.
She's got all the contracts.
They're in a cab that can carries off.
That never-ending one.
Okay.
I had one, uh, this one's just for you, Bill. The paint, paint the chess board, not in there, there is no money in the paint budget. I would like some money in the paint budget, so Bill and I can go and scrape and repaint the chess set, because it's so important to both of us, we will do, we will paint it free of charge, we just need paint.
It's a look of confusion, just.
I'll fill you in later, but I saw that.
So what are you doing?
Better be with all of this too, then.
We only, we only actually need one color, is that correct?
You just need black.
You just need one color.
You just need black.
Can't we get some?
So one of you doesn't get black, one doesn't get white, and one does one side of the board, one does the other?
I'll do the clear coat. And Bill's gonna do black.
We'll get your paint, you don't have to put it in.
Thank you. Um, what is Goose River Snow Club?
That's the snowmobile, um, it's snowbo, snowmobile group, and it's money, it's that, are you looking at the revenue?
No.
Other contracted contractual services.
And look at R one zero zero two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's up with?
It's, it's.
So it's a wash?
It's a wash. We basically collect money in and gi, give it out to them to maintain the trails, to do trail maintenance.
Where do we collect from?
The state.
From.
For the state.
Yeah.
I actually had snowmobile in them circled, so glad to know that that's, we're one in the same.
When you, I believe, Linda, when they register, they pay a, there's a fee?
That's correct, they pay, um, I think it's either thirty-three or forty dollars to register the snowmobiles, and the state reimburses a portion of that.
And how much length of trail do we have in the town of Rockport that the snowmobiles can actually go on? Because I was talking to some people, and they were not happy about the amount of trails.
I don't.
They said that their trails that they cut back in the day for their sleds have now become hiking trails that they're not allowed to basically go on anymore.
There are some in West Rockport.
That makes sense, that I can see.
Yeah, they're all on Tolman Pond.
Talk to the pathways committee, though, I bet you they'd know.
Yeah, that's gonna go over like something awesome.
We'll talk to the recreation committee.
I'm liaison to both, you guys are talking to the right person.
You have the, you have the information.
Awesome, yeah, let me just talk to them about snowmobiles on their trails, it's gonna be great.
It's simple, you, you can walk if you're heading north, you can snowmobile if you're heading south, that way everybody sees each other coming.
And the snowmobiles eventually will get to a place, we're off topic, I apologize.
Okay. We get any more on the Parks and Rec? Then let's go to Public Works. Twenty-one.
Now we're talking money.
Now we're in the big money.
Of course, me.
Public Works, the big money stuff.
Oh, this, yes, yes.
It does make it easier, doesn't it?
If I could just make a comment back to, I've been kinda thinking about this as all the conversation has gone on, kinda bothered me that we're like making fun of people who are concerned about the cemetery length of grass, because actually, it's pretty respectful to keep it looking nice there, and, you know, like, my grandfather just got buried over there, and, I don't know, it just would be really a shame to go visit, you know, your loved one and have the grass growing, and, I don't know, it just seems to me like if we're gonna shave the budget, yeah, let's do, let's be respectful and do what we need to do to keep taxes down, but we can also mow the cemetery, so, I don't know, just, I didn't really feel really good about that conversation, I don't know how other people.
I'm gonna make a side comment, my wife, this is her field, and most people cut grass much too short for the health of the grass, and that grass should be an inch, inch and a half long, not get cut down to a look, to always looking like a, um, a, um, a golf hole. So, um, yes, I think it should, I think it should be cut, but I think people should also realize that it is a, a plant, and we were trying to take the best care possible of all of our plants. So we can go both ways on that, but I don't, I don't want it to get to the point where, I agree with you, I don't want it to get to the point where it's messy or disrespectful.
We don't wanna grow hay, but.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna grow hay, and so it's just, there are some places that you cut that, that where it means more than other places, cemeteries and ball fields mean more to me than the park across the street from Union Hall, that can get a little longer, or some of the other places. I, I will agree with you on, on, uh, the respectful.
It's not really how it felt, the conversation to me, and also kinda sounded like we're making fun of people who call up and complain about the length of the grass in the cemetery, I can kinda feel where they'd feel that way, so. Not to derail our whole conversation, but I really kinda needed to get that off my chest, thanks.
Can I throw something out there that, because I completely respect what you just said, I spent a lot of time in cemeteries cleaning them, uh, the, the headstones, and one thing that I've also noticed, which is kind of counter to what you're saying, is sometimes the tray, it, it doesn't happen all the time, but the tray of the mower will start scuffing up and leave especially the marbles, it starts chiseling in this line, and the weed whackers will do the same over time as well. So when we were having that conversation, I was thinking, you know, actually, for the health and well-being of the stones themselves, reducing the amount that we mow, aesthetically, it's not as pleasing, but it would actually do more beneficial things for the stones. So just, just as a kind of, I, you know, I don't know where I would fall on any of it, it's just something I've noticed over time, you'll see these really distinct chiseled, and, um, sometimes the whole stone, the top, will be knocked off the pedestal a little bit at an angle, and I know it's primarily from the mowers. But I have had long conversations with, uh, this gentleman who's doing at least West Rockport and Rockville Cemeteries, working for Farley. His family has taken care of cemeteries over time, it's a skill that he learned as a kid, and he was the one telling me, when I'm running these crews, I have him shoot the grass away from the stones, because people oftentimes will shoot the grass right onto the stones, and then I come along trying to clean the stones up, and you're taking all this grass off, so there are people that are really aware of that and trying to be respectful of it, but I'm, you know, it's just got me thinking about the balance of too much versus too little mowing.
Yeah, the, the complaint we get is typically with the cemetery lots is that, is that it's too long. And it, cemeteries are particularly challenging, because there's so many of them, it takes so long to mow them, because it's, it's difficult, they're, they're not easy, uh, ball fields are fairly easy to mow, because they're open and flat, the cemeteries, and so if, even if they start in one place, by the time you get through, the, and particularly in May and June, the grass has grown up someplace else, so it's, it grows like almost so you can watch it grow, and so that's, we do get complaints about, even the, the mowing the way we do now, we get, those are the areas we get complaints, is the cemetery, and also the ball field, is we get, we get a lot of complaints about both of those, even at the way, the, the way we mow now. So making cuts will get, we, we will get more complaints.
Um, one thing I would say in regard to cemetery mowing, when they purchase a cemetery lot, two-thirds of the money they pay for the cemetery lot is for perpetual care, which is the mowing of the lots.
So that, some of that money shows up as revenue, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
We ready to go to Public Works? I'm gonna ask the big question first, how far are we falling behind on paving?
We're on time, we're on, oh.
Oh, if we, if we make the cut.
No, 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 not that, we're in Public Works.
Yeah, we, we certainly can, we certainly should be doing more, not less, paving, and this was the last thing that I cut.
Yeah.
To make, you know, I went through and made all the other cuts first, and this is where I, I got to and said, okay, we're gonna have to go here.
Because my recollection is, when we put this chart together, our goal was to get it to back up to around thirty-one to thirty-five hundred tons, and the cost is down, you know.
We are still behind, we're, we're not caught up, for sure. We, we do need to try to get to that number that, you know.
We didn't get, we didn't get Steve's usual sheet here showing all the roads and which ones are three E's and four.
No, we're not supposed to do that, we're supposed to be talking about tons of asphalt.
I know, I know. I know, we are.
Ask him which roads he's doing.
And I'm just asking where.
Ask him which roads he's doing.
Good, good, good.
I wanna make sure we're, we're keeping them up, because it helps on our winter, our winter clearing, because.
It does.
This num, if we cut, it is gonna hurt.
This number isn't.
Because we're behind.
Is, this, this number is not gonna, uh, keep us up, a, a, actually, I, I'd venture that even at last year's rate, we're not keeping up. How many tons did we do last year with that, with, um, the two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand?
Twenty-eight.
How many tons?
We still have, she has.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred tons.
So we planned on twenty-eight hundred tons last year, and you were trying to plan for.
I hope to even do a little more in the spring, for this.
Weren't you also gonna be doing down in the harbor on the commercial side there, where, um, mainly lobsters?
That, that's a cement pad in there.
Okay, but that doesn't come out of?
No, there's a, there's a, that was budgeted in a separate slab.
Okay.
Yeah, we should be probably at like two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand for paving, at the prices to be where we wanna be on tonnage.
So, you would originally ask for the same thing that you got for the year that we're in now?
Right.
And that would have brought your tonnage up a little bit, because it's slightly less than it was before?
A little more.
But we're still falling behind.
Where we should be.
Okay.
What, what line is this, what line is the paving on?
Seven six oh five.
I'm sorry, what?
Road construction, seven.
Six zero five.
Seven six zero five.
Oh, seven six, okay, I'm on, okay, I'm on road construction supplies, of which there are none.
Yeah.
No, just actual road construction.
Thank you.
What's for the biggest number?
I got, yeah, I suppose that's the way to do it.
And the asphalt numbers are on the next page.
Yes, that, well, those numbers I saw, yeah.
If you had your druthers, how many tons would you be?
What, what the chair suggested is where we should be.
Somewhere between thirty-one and thirty-five hundred.
Exactly.
Yep.
In that number that you put in there, two, five, two, that gets us there. I understand you were kind of, but would that number have gotten us to the thirty-one to thirty-five?
That still does not get us to where it would be even a bigger jump.
Yeah, it only goes, that only gets us to twenty-eight hundred.
So in a perfect world, how much would you need like cost-wise?
It depends on the cost of that. We're going by tonnage, but cost-wise, until we bid it, you know.
Say, say it's ninety-three dollars a ton.
Yeah, the last.
So ninety-three dollars a ton times thirty-one hundred tons.
Right.
I mean, if you wanna start at the bottom, that's.
Well, he's showing ninety now.
Well, he said ninety-three though, that's what just came out.
It's two hundred and eighty-eight, three.
Certainly is.
So that two eighty-five was a. Pretty close. Yeah. Rick, I have another question too. Uh, up at the top, uh, item five, zero, zero, five, food and paper. You've got seven hundred under the department head and you've got it red marked seven hundred under yours. Is that a typo?
Oh, I had it originally increased, that's what it was. I had originally increased it to fourteen hundred.
Oh, okay.
And then I decreased, I decreased it back, um, to make it the same.
Okay, so it shouldn't be red really.
Well, he wanted it to be fourteen.
I wanted it to be fourteen.
And just to confirm, that's what, food?
For the guys when they're.
Guys, when you guys are working twenty-four hours a day.
When, when Tracy and I don't bring down the crock pot.
I know. Well, this one we didn't need to.
No.
I, I would've, but.
Yeah, they haven't had.
What, what, what?
Knock, knock. Knock on wood.
It's only ours. Right, right.
It's not April yet.
It's not April, it's not May.
That's true.
You got a wood floor there, sir.
Oh. Can't bend that fucker.
They have had, you know, the, surprisingly, even with the winter that we didn't have, you know, they, they surprisingly still have had a lot of overtime hours. The difference between this year and last year is we haven't had extended periods of time with two or three days where the guys have lived there for two or three days.
Yeah.
You know, we haven't had that. We've had twenty-four hour periods.
And a lot of out during the middle of the night, make things freeze.
Well, and the slush and the ice is worse than five inches of snow.
At times, yep.
Yeah.
Another question too. Under seventy-two oh five buildings improvements, what, what needs to be done and, and why?
That's, uh, two new garage doors, uh, for, uh, replacing two more doors.
I'm just gonna try to get, well.
We're trying to do two a year.
One of those.
We're gonna get one this year.
This year, one, right, in the budget we're in now. So that'll be replacing one, one door for next year's budget.
And these are big, you know, the really big doors. So if we can go back to paving too, I mean, I think the approach you're taking with tonnage is, is a good approach to take. Because you can get, you can kinda control the consistency. But the thing we need to keep in mind is depending on the road that we're going, the road we're doing next, you know, some roads use more tonnage and some use less. But at least with.
That's why we went to tonnage, is that we don't have to, we can leave it up to him. We don't have to micromanage the streets. We don't have to listen to constituents saying, but my street, my street, my street. And it's like, nope, it's out of our hands, sorry.
But the, you know, the, the way we're doing it makes the, makes the most sense. It makes a lot of sense because it just, we're going by the tonnage and, and, you know, we may get.
Yeah, so if this one needs one lift, we're good. And if that one needs rebuilding in three, and then we'll do that.
Well, but the whole point is that the order and which streets are left to public works rather than to.
And so if they get contracts with all of the different utilities lined up, and they can do this street, because that's what makes sense this, they'll do that, rather than.
I know.
That's right. That's why Summer Street is gonna be getting.
Though I'm also looking at our, our asphalt and looking at, at the year that shouldn't have been and going, well, he got it for eighty dollars a ton. And it went up to ninety-three the next year, so it was a good year to like, aim everything. It was a pain.
You're gonna make a mistake there, what's your time?
You look at the numbers and we probably saved a lot of money that year.
Are we good?
We, we do need to try to keep that, if we can, that close to two eighty-five would be nice. I mean, two, the two fifty, I figured was reasonable. But the more these roads deteriorate, the more we either need to put on them to shim them to get them back, or we need to do it.
That's why we, we switched to tonnage.
Can I ask a question? I lost last night the idea of ventilation for the public safety building because nobody lives there. But people do live, I was told, in the public works building, especially in, in the winter. Has there ever been a, a study done of the air quality in that? Or what it would cost to, to, to bring it up to code, or is there a code, or has anybody ever investigated it?
Not, I guess not in a big, just, just looked into it some, but not in a big. Are you talking specifically the exhaust sucker system?
Well, I, I was talking about the exhaust sucker, sucker system for the fire department.
Yeah, but we need to do the same thing.
That it doesn't make as much, it's not as critical as it is here because guys bunk there all the time. And Sue works there forty hours a week, or eighty hours a week, or whatever it amounts to. Um, and you're in and out a lot, but, but there are trucks in that building and there's, um, heating in that building and so forth. And I'm, I'm wondering whether it's ever been investigated and if not, if I could suggest to the, um, to the board, an ad hoc committee with a small budget to go and, and figure that out, if, if it needs it, if we should be talking about it or not.
I, I think we should be talking about it, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Study would probably be hard, but I, I think the ultimate outcome is gonna be that we need it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I, I don't think there's any, any reason to study it because we know, you know, we know air quality will be significantly improved if we put in a system to deal with the air.
Well, then study, by study, I mean probably get, get engineered to plan it.
Right.
Well, but you also have the other thing, because you've got a group of people, is you could also find a way to have them not be in the same building, in the same, you know, airlock kind of things that are gonna make a huge difference. You guys have a door that's open most of the time to where you've got big trucks. That when you need to start to check or move them or clean them or whatever.
There are options of pressurizing rooms.
Right. So, I mean, I think that there might be other things, because we're talking about a lot of vehicles of different sizes that aren't always parked in exactly the same places, and a lot of people. So, I mean, for the study wise, there might be other kinds of.
Options.
Options. With the fire department, it's the same truck in the same place all the time.
Right.
With you guys, I know that most trucks have their homes, but when you've gotta come in and work on somebody, you've got other things in and out. So that would be the part of the study I would support.
It would be challenged.
Is how do we, how do we make sure our employees are as safe as they could be? And that they aren't breathing in more than they absolutely have to. And that answer may be an air handling system.
Maybe walling, walling off the truck area.
Right. There may be other answers that, that we need to explore, not just a whatever exhaust system for the vehicles.
Yeah, oh, no, no, I, I, yeah.
So I agree with you.
Yes.
I agree with you. Don't disagree with me, I'm agreeing with you.
We were talking last night about the fiber option and talking about maybe putting something back in for the fiber option. Wouldn't it be more prudent to use the money we would use for that for the construction of the roads?
Um, well, that's a select board decision, but you may very well be, yeah, yes, I, I think you're probably right, yeah. We, cause one of the things that we said last night was if you don't put in the whole three hundred thousand, it's pointless to put any in. And I don't think we're gonna be capable of putting the whole three hundred thousand in this year.
Right.
It looks like we find other places to put it, but the select board gets the first shot at putting back in money. We should get to comment on it.
Well, that's my comment.
Well, okay.
Well, Mike, you've said, I think at least three times, and we, then we go someplace else, that you feel that that original formula really needed to be followed.
Yeah, I agree, yes.
And so that seems like a, I don't know what the selectmen would recommend, but it seems for budget purposes, or for the budget committee's purposes. I mean, that's your department head and you've been very keen on that too, Bill, as a select board person.
Thirty-three hundred times ninety-three.
Right.
Is twenty-eight, eight, three hundred.
Okay. I should write that down because I'll never remember. So that's what it would take. That's what it would take to get back to formula.
To get the thirty-one hundred. It would cost more to go to the thirty-five hundred.
Which is what Mike wants?
It's here the range.
The, the range, the range is between thirty-one and thirty-five. At this point, with all of the hurdles we had, if we could get to thirty-one, that would be nice. And the two, eight, eight, three goes to thirty-one, not to that thirty-five.
And, and we're not seeing a reduction in the cost of asphalt because the asphalt is coming from further away now.
It does come from further away, but the price. Yeah, the price did go down. It went to ninety-three and then it dropped back. I think last year we paid ninety, so it was three bucks less a ton. So it did get down a little bit, but not huge.
Where'd it come from?
In it may.
Where'd it come from?
I think it was hauling up near about.
I mean, the good thing for us is, is we put it on amount and we're lucky enough that it goes down, we're gonna get more for our money. But if we ha, if we make that calculation based on what we think you need, or what you've told us you need that we agree with.
Right.
It's a win-win. And if it goes up, we have to live with the fact that it's ninety-five.
Look, look at it this way. If we pay two hundred, if we budget two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars based on ninety-three dollars a ton. If it drops to ninety a ton, we get thirty-two hundred and three tons. So we get another hundred tons.
Right.
So.
No, I'm good. I'm not complaining. Well, maybe I was, but.
Go talk to the asphalt gods, okay?
There's an asphalt god.
There's a god of everything if you want it.
That's a new one.
Are we still on the asphalt gods?
We're, we're still on public works.
I have a question, um, line three-nine-two-zero, training and education. I'm making an assumption something happened in FY fourteen fifteen to, that bumped that number up. But my question is, is that, that seems like a pretty low number. And what, something that's really important to me is that the constant training and professional development of town employees. And it was kind of a similar.
There's a notation for it.
Oh.
The reason it went up, the, the reason it went up and, um, went up to twenty-three seventeen was for training for one of our drivers to get his commercial license. And so, um, that was a big, the lion's share of that.
Yeah, and that, no, that makes sense. The follow-on is, is that two hundred enough to get your, your boys and girls where they need to get?
It is. A lot, a lot of the, a lot of the training we go to, uh, through either, like other towns will do DOT puts on, so they're not real pricey training, so.
It is employee, professional development's kinda big for me, and so just trying to make sure that they're getting what they need.
And we have like MMA come out and do safety training every year.
Yeah.
Yep.
I got it. Nope. Oh, you're combing your hair.
Okay.
Nope.
I've got tons of questions. I apologize for being the questioning person. Uh, under employee benefits, both workers comp and main public employees retirement. Should I just not be astounded at those numbers? Just, I just can be astounded.
It's gonna go up in every department.
We'll forgive you.
Cause that's not even like a little bit. That's like a lot. Okay.
I do have a question on the administrative assistant. I know part of her time had been being paid for out of the Opera House budget. She is no longer being paid out of that. It's totally and completely to public works now. That's the increase there.
And that's gonna be some of your increases through all of the employee benefits, because a portion of hers were paid through the Opera House, where now they're all public works.
I had one other question. I think this is the last one. It's just, uh, actually two questions, sorry. Uh, the Mill Street Bridge Engineering, is that the right place for an engineering budget line? I guess I just don't know enough. I thought.
It's gone now.
It's gone now, but I'm just, it's more of a procedural.
Replacing the bridge is a capital expenditure.
And through public works funnels the money for simply the engineering portion of it?
No, that's because it was done before the, the bond and everything. Now everything goes under the bond. But this was long before that, where we said we have to find out what this problem is.
Which will be coming back, coming back to you because there was a mistake made with, that was supposed to have gotten to you to encumber because we haven't spent that money. And so it got rolled over into the, back into the UFB. So we'll be, you know, once we get. Well, you haven't, you haven't.
Cho's is being actually spent. In fourteen fifteen, it says actual.
There were things that were spent out of that, but there was money that was not encumbered.
There was money that was supposed.
There is more that we need to encumber.
We'll know better once the bids come back. Um, once we get all of our bids back and, and, um, and figure, figure everything out in total. We'll be able to go back to the board and say, you know, if, if we need more money for the engineering, we may need to come back and, and ask the board for that out of, back out of the UFB. But that's another, another whole conversation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I'm not sure if Owen's question, his real question got answered, but from a responsibility, even though, even though it's an engineering study because all of the infrastructure falls on, in that department, it's a responsibility thing.
Okay. That, that answers it. Thank you. And my very last question, and this is a broader one, uh, and I think everyone has, so this is not any sort of weird critique on you. Uh, parking lots, construction, right, seven, six, one, zero. There's, there's nothing in that. And there's nothing in that going back to FY twelve and thirteen. And I'm just curious, why do line items stay in when they haven't had any money in them in the time period in which we view it?
The one I missed, I've been pulling them out if we haven't been budgeting for them.
I was half thinking it was like just a gentle reminder that you gotta do something at some point, maybe. No?
Well, you're gonna.
Well, that has logic, that has logic to it.
That's kinda what I was thinking. It was almost a half deliberative.
That would be, that we have another place where there's, where, where we'd be doing repay, where we'd be doing repaving of parking lots. Wouldn't, would come out of a different line, I would imagine.
What about the entrance, what about the entrance to the town office parking lot where we?
That wouldn't come out of that line. That would become out of. Yes, the bump, where I thought I broke.
Yeah.
Where I broke my car, my truck. Um, where would that come out of, Mike? It would, to replace the culvert and, and, um.
We talked about putting the parking lot construction like this line.
Oh, okay.
Directly to it. We do have a list on what they've numbered it, which needs to be done first. But at the moment, that would come out of road construction.
Right. Mike is saying at the moment that would come out of road construction budget? That's where it would come now.
Right at the moment, it would come out of road construction to fix.
That, that.
Town office. Rick and I have been working on a plan and numbering like the roads, all of the parking lots and try to get those parking lots budgeted separately as well.
So in the future, they will come out of the parking lot, that parking lot line.
But you'd see a capital, that, that, the thing is, is that would be part of our capital improvement plan, which we didn't get done this year. So, you know, that's thing number one, once we get through the budget process, that we'll start working on again, once Megan gets her feedback under her. And start working on the capital improvement plan, which parking lots, all those things will start going in there into that plan. And then you'll see a bigger, you'll see a, you'll see a huge number of stuff that needs fixing. But then you'll start, be able to start categorizing that and saying, these, these are our priorities. Here's the things we want to move forward and start to build the budget that way.
Okay.
Next.
Well, I got a question here because I can't reconcile it. Under your, um, support budget information, capital items, it says new, twenty-seventeen Ford F-five-fifty, yada, yada, total cost a hundred and three thousand, three hundred. I don't.
Really a twenty-sixteen.
Oh, okay. So it's the last one there under line twenty-two, six, or seventy-two, sixty?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's the one, uh, basically we're, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but they were gonna change the body of the truck to all aluminum body and all of that. And so what we're opting for is getting the exact same truck as we just bought and giving it a, a couple of years for the, the, um, the new Ford trucks to kinda get, get through at least. We'll have two trucks that are exactly the same instead of having one that, that hasn't really been tested. It hasn't hit the market really yet. We don't want the first one off the line. And, uh, so that, we're, we're, we're gearing for a two thousand sixteen model. So our, our goal is to get the exact same truck we have already. And then with the, these small trucks, the, the F-five-fifties are not gonna, we're not, they're not back on the schedule to get replaced for a few more years. And then they'll have several years of building them for, to work out all the bugs before we have to, have to buy another one.
I just love you called it a small truck. Have you seen my truck? Like a F-point-five.
Yeah.
All right.
So what's next?
Oh, the Opera House, if there's any public.
Have we done beating up Mike?
I think we are. Well, for this one.
Well, yeah, now we get to beat him up again.
We get to beat him up a lot.
Turn the page and beat me up some more.
Yeah.
Towards Mike.
Oh, torch Mike.
One forty, oh yeah, one forty-three is the page.
So some changes in the Opera House, uh, you'll see it, the first one in red is initially, uh, we had looked at moving the rental agent up in hours to, uh, I think fourteen hours, yes, fourteen hours. But I, that would have bring, brought the budget up to eighteen thousand, two hundred dollars. And so we brought, I brought that back down to the fifteen-six, which is an increase over last year already because it was only. Budgeted at eight hours, correct, Mike? Yeah, it was being budgeted at eight hours before. So it brings it back down to the, uh, to twelve hours. Twenty hours per week, increased to twenty hours per week? Is that what it is?
No, it's twenty-five hours. That's there. That's not really.
Okay.
How many hours is it, Rick?
So it's, it's, it's decreasing it back to twelve. Twelve hours a week.
And that yields the fifteen-six.
Yep.
Okay.
The next thing is the house manager, one is, uh, in theory offset by revenues from rentals. So when, um, when the house manager is here, we're billing the rental, the people renting for that amount. And so we, in theory, collect that back again. Things that I cut were the web hosting and design. Basically because we hadn't spent anything out of it. I think we should be spending some things out of it, but where we hadn't spent anything out of it, I cut it. The big cut I made here was it in, um, building improvements. We've talked several times, as you heard me say last night, about refinishing the floor upstairs. It's been in a couple of times and we pulled it out of the budget. And, uh, it, it was in again and we pulled it out again. The board would have, depending on how the fi- final, uh, stuff came in for our, um, uh, HVAC, control systems, and when the final numbers come in, there may be, the board may wanna consider getting the upstairs done using, um, the reserve funds that we've accumulated over the years, cause it's about forty, there's fifty-eight thousand in reserves now. We are gonna dip into that a little bit for the, for the controls, but not a whole lot. I think we, what do we think? We, we might dip into it for about eight or ten thousand?
I believe it was around ten.
So it may, we may have to dip into it for about ten. We thought, you know, we, when we put the bid together and everything, we thought we were gonna chew into most of that. But the way the bid came back with every, when everything, when all the dust was settled and the bids came in so low, uh, that we're, we're only gonna be dipping into it by about eight or ten thousand dollars, all things, if everything goes as we expect. We have a bid for the work. You know, the, the, the challenge is always if there's any change orders or they discover something that, that is totally outside of, uh, the, the bid. You know, we, we could have change orders that would affect that. We did really well on this, the, we did really well on the, the building itself. I don't think we had more than a couple of small change orders.
Right.
On the building itself. And then also on the heating system. Again, we, you know, the bid specs, we spent a little money getting this bid specs as tight as we could get them. And so getting the, the, uh, engineering done and the bid specs pulled together, you know, working with the engineer to pull bid specs together. We had really tight specs so that I think we only had a change order of a, you know, it was less than a thousand dollars.
Yeah, right.
Of, of a small change order to do that big heating system. So my hope is that we'll see the same thing on the, on the controls, which will put us in really good shape. Cause we had, we had thought we were gonna eat into that reserve fund by quite a bit. And we won't.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can I just make a, a comment on the, the new practice of making very tight bid specs and, and particularly in engineering stuff prior? It really, really, really helps all of our bids because you can imagine someone saying, oh, old building, old pipe, all this. And they're gonna put in a big hedge, uh, for themselves so they don't kill themselves. And the next guy who's not even as friendly as that is gonna, is gonna double that margin. So, uh, we're giving money away by not doing what we are now doing, and I think we should continue it.
It, it costs us a little do, to do that, but we saved a lot of money by doing that. Uh, we did the same thing with, um, Mount Pleasant Street.
Right.
You know, we, we eliminate the, the, all of the speculation. It's, it's, we, we, we do, we do the drilling, we do the boring, we do the test borings. We do all of that work up front and so that they, they have a better sense of what they're bidding. And so we get a better number.
Have a question. Oh, sorry, Helen.
Oh, yeah, I had a question. Actually, sort of a related question. Under, um, purchase and contractual services, thirty-twenty-six web hosting and thirty-eight-oh-five advertising, sort of combined. The web hosting design, I think is, we've, you've cut that sort of across the board. Is, is that what's reflected here?
Y- yeah, pretty much. Cause I think I cut it, I cut it in, uh, budget yesterday. What budget did I cut it out of yesterday? Administration line. I cut it out of the administration line.
Well, I'm just wanting, combined with that, with the advertising cut, what impact might that have on our ability to bring in additional rentals if, if people can't find it on the website or the advertising isn't out there?
Uh, it certainly will have an impact. Um, how much? I don't, I don't know. But personally, there are cuts I don't wanna make because I, it's, they're, they're cuts that, you know, this kind of work is, you know, the, the work Terry's doing, um, is making people aware that the Opera House is available. It gets us, you know, the, the, she's doing a newsletter, she's doing Facebook posts. And the web, the, the web stuff is, is a lot of, um, a lot of work. And right now they're working on trying to make it so that you can buy tickets online?
Yes, so you can start taking credit cards.
So, so that people can, you know, remotely, you know, get a ticket instead of having to come here, buy a ticket. You know, we don't have a box office that's open. So that, that work, you know, that, that takes work to do that. Um, and so we've, basically, we're cutting a lot of that out, but it's, that, that stuff gets cut out, but it's either that or we're cutting out maintenance and other things that we need to keep the building up. So.
And the, the, oh, sorry, I didn't see you. I would hope that at the very least that we retain the domain names and.
Oh, absolutely.
Presence, and there's money in there for that.
Right.
That doesn't go away and some, some squatter doesn't take over the domain name.
Right. Cause we did spend some money getting those domain names and we did buy.
Well, they're cheap to keep. It's just, it's not easy to get them back.
Right. And we, there was, we bought up, uh, we bought up most of them, right? I, I, I'm not sure if you, you're aware, but.
We bought a co- a combination.
Yeah, we bought a combination of them so that a lot of, if, if you do a bunch of different searches, it will all direct you to the same place. So, uh, we bought, the big one was, the one that cost us a little bit of money was rockport.com, rockportmaine.com, I think. So we've, we've bought, I think we have maybe five or six or more.
Some of them are, are hidden in that if you put, uh, rockportoperahouse.net, it'll, it'll push you to dot, dot com because it's a sort of internal switch.
Right. So there's a bunch of them that are all directing to different, you know, to.
That's good practice. I think the important thing about three-oh-two-six, which is web ho-, um, uh, web hosting and design, it would have been irresponsible for us to spend that money up to this point, cause we really weren't together. So, but to predicate the next fiscal year based on the fact that we didn't spend anything in there is, is kind of a, a, a false equivalence. And because we really are ready now, and that's really important to understand. And it makes all of the prep work. You know, it, it makes it not our well-kept secret. It's out there. So I, I think that's important. Will be important to consider putting back in.
I, I, I totally agree. I.
Then another quick question from what you're saying. We had twelve hundred in the calendar year now. Is that not carried over to the next year?
No, it, it, if it's not encumbered, it won't be carried over.
But we could encumber.
We could encumber it.
We could encumber it. And, and also I think that, uh, the folks that are donating their time and what have you, um, on that. I think we're gonna try and, and responsibly spend some of that money prior to year end.
Last night John said, cause it was the question under administration, I think it was five thousand dollars. None of it had been spent. He said, just got started, have the plans to spend it. So I would assume that this probably would be in that same bucket.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There's, there's, they just, they had their first kind of informal meeting a couple of weeks ago, and there's another one scheduled.
Uh, next week.
Next week. And, and you'll start to see them wanting to do, make some recommendations. And as Jeff said, we didn't wanna go out and just spend it willy-nilly without a, a plan for how we, cause I'm not the person that knows how to do the, do that stuff. We, I'm relying on the technology committee to make recommendations.
That just raised the question to me, going back to the harbor. I thought we were gonna have a website for the harbor.
A website?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I, I thought we were talking about rockportharbor.com too, or some, somewhere back in the history. Cause that was, you know, when you're saying, well, you know, getting the word out there, we're not a well-kept secret anymore. Some kind of component out there where they can, you know, figure out and get straight to the harbor to find out all the rates and the rentals and the vacancies and.
It's gonna use our, it, it should use our existing website. We don't, we don't need separate websites for all of the town departments. But we do need them.
Names, cause you could have like harbor.rockportmaine.com, whatever, subdomain, and you don't pay any extra for that.
What I'm saying, if we got web hosting over here.
Right.
Wouldn't we think of having a similar situation in, in the harbor? Well, you know, we got it over in the library. Of course, I think they get paid for out of the.
You can go ahead and add more money anyplace you want.
I'm just asking about.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I, we, we could spend significantly more than we currently spend on web and, and, um, uh, social media and public presence. You know, we, we basically, is there an argument to be made to have somebody full-time that works simply on web design, social media presence, pushing our message out there? Yeah, there's an argument to be made for that. Can we, can we afford it?
We could choose to, but it's not, it's something you have to choose to do.
Right, yeah.
I would love to see someone propose what they would be able to generate above and beyond what we would pay them to do it. Sorry, I interrupted your hand.
I don't know if this is the right pa- place for this question, but where does the money for our videographer come from? Especially when we have town meetings.
It depends. If, and this one comes out of, this one will come out of administration. So come, it's in a different budgets, like planning board, if they have a video, videographer at their meetings, there's some money there. Our meetings are, you know, these meetings come out of us, our budget.
Okay. Cause I don't remember it being huge.
Uh, but I think budget committee will come out of us as well.
And the ad hoc library? Wait, wait, wait. Did, did yours just, just change course? The budget committee is gonna.
Budget committee's gonna.
We don't have a budget.
We don't have a budget.
We're a committee without a budget. Okay. Would you, would you be on TV? I don't wanna get.
They are.
A bill.
Oh.
That's all. I don't wanna get a bill at the end of the fiscal year.
What's your address?
So, um, yeah, I know I'm late. So that's the twenty-five-hundred dollars in the general government administration line. And that's the whole year. That's all the videographer money for all of these five billion meetings that we seem to be having.
Some of it is, um, that's your portion. The planning board has their own portion.
Right.
Who else has their own portion?
Um, like right now in the video tech, um, I did this yesterday. We had only spent sixteen-hundred dollars out of that. So you have almost eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars left, um, planning. Um, has spent seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars.
Where's the line for like special events for like the one-twenty-fifth when we did all that videographer work?
That, I was told to take that out of the, the administration budget.
That'll come out of us. But we, if you go past nine o'clock, we'll, we'll be way over budget.
Ah, ten points.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I knew where it was coming from.
What, uh, what tickets are we gonna be selling online? Are we gonna be helping sell Bay Chamber tickets or what's the?
No, Bay Chamber handles their own ticket sales. Uh, what, it would be ideally for future events that I'm working on bringing in, like movies. Hopefully bring in more perform, musical performances. So that, that's another incentive to bring in, uh, artists so that they have a way of.
Sponsored by the town.
The town or the library?
Yeah, or finding a nonprofit sponsor in the area.
Okay. Ken McKinley is working on bringing a group in.
State Street.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, should be good.
People might wanna sell tickets to their weddings. This is maybe a new kind of thing to do.
We're gonna sell tickets to the budget.
Doesn't include alcohol.
Tickets to the library meetings.
Rick, this, this, this question's gonna come out sounding bad, but I don't know how to make it sound good.
Preface it by not saying that.
Okay, right. Okay, in terms of, because this is just a little note to me, the whole, the rental agent and the salary and in terms of what that job entails, I just happened to do a quick glance over at revenues in terms of what Opera House rentals are. So I'm assuming that the job of rental agent must cover more than just bringing in rentals because the rentals don't come out to as much as the salary for the rental agent? And I don't know if that's a total oxymoron.
That, that's a good que, that's a good question, uh, Stevie, is, is that there's a certain amount of risk here that we're trying to build up something here in the Opera House. So there's an investment in trying to, to get more rentals in. And, and, you know, there's a bunch of challenges we have is making the, one of the beauties of the Opera House is it's affordable. It's user-friendly. It's a beautiful place. Um, and, you know, to keep the rental down so that it's, it's affordable. People can get in and use it, but, um, also make enough money to try and help offset some of the costs. And some of the work that Terry has been doing with the rental agent is, is, goes beyond simply just the, the work of, handling the rental, but also promoting the Opera House so that there's more rentals coming in or more use coming in. And in, in my mind, and, and I think in the mind of a lot of people, is the, the value in the Opera House really isn't in the, only in the rental money we bring in, but it's in, it's what it brings in vitality to the town. You know, and, and the diversity in the town and the culture that, that happens in Rockport. So there's, there is an investment in that. And so this has been bumped up a bit. And it's, it does go beyond what the projected revenues are. The hope is that we'll get more rentals. Or even if we don't get more rentals, we'll have more use. So in, in my mind, e- even if the, even if the rentals didn't quite equate what it costs. But if the, if the Opera House is busy and people are using it and, and there's people here every other weekend or every weekend, that's, that's great for us. That's great for us as a community. And if we're not, you know, if we're not making a lot of money at it, you know, we'll, we make it in, in vit- in ver- vitality in the village and in the community, so.
The town of Rockport is not a profit-making business.
Right.
It's there to provide services and to provide ambiance and however else you wanna say it. It's a lost leader that, uh, we choose to support. Well, we can look at it like running a nonprofit where we're providing a service at a reasonable cost that people want. That's right.
Jeff's got a question.
A couple of the other functions. Couple of the other functions that you can think of in terms of being built into that salary is that possibly, possibly as much of a third of it is directly, I mean, Terry Lee reports to Mike and there's a reason for that is because, you know, there's a responsibility factor and also running around and getting set up for like, for these meetings, which are not billable for other stuff. So possibly as much of a third of it can be looked at directly as just sort of a functional cost of having this building keep on going. And the other thing is, is that it's, it's by doing all, by experiencing both the incoming people from which, I mean, Terry will take, let's say, twenty calls a month for people inquiring, six of those turn into rentals, some of them go out, that's non-billables in terms of our revenue coming in also, and that's a house manager slash rental agent sort of thing. But she's also collecting information, bringing it to the Opera House Committee, bringing it to the select board that says, hey, as friendly as we are and may want to be, it might be that we want to bring these particular charges up and that's, and we have nowhere to go but up because we are absolutely the nicest, most reasonable and most flexible, you know. Upstairs is incredible space because we can take all the chairs away, make them come back. That, you know, Randy's cost and Terry's cost on that far overweight overwhelms what we get in for input. And that's something we might want to look at. But, but all of that stuff is built into that, that amount of money. So it's, you know, it's a multifaceted thing. Did I get that right?
Yes, yeah, it has a lot of answering phone calls and questions.
Tracy?
So I have two comments. The first one is along with what Jeff was talking about, is that we were spending very close to this amount of money already with somebody else who was running back and forth here from Public Works and trying to get this done. So the kind of service we get here now is because you're here. I know over this week, I know how many things have happened in this room because I've been here for most of them. So I, I think it's a great thing. I think it's a good step. But one of the things that I'd like to see is I know that some of these expenditures are pass-throughs, like the security officers and stuff like that, and it would be nice to be able to see the pass-through in the revenues rather than just having a single line.
That's, that's our future.
Right, right.
I have started breaking those out now.
Cool, okay.
Because there was no way to tell, are we offsetting our costs? So it's not, we started it in January.
Oh, okay.
So by the end of this next coming fiscal year, we'll be able to say, is, is what we're charging enough to offset our rental?
Perfect. That's all I wanted to say is because it would be nice to be able to see it pass through the things that we expect to be passed through, like security.
Correct.
And then we can also separate in our minds at least, how much is the value added that we're getting for having somebody here?
Correct.
So that's great.
Go ahead. I was just going to make.
If you're responding to her, go ahead.
No, I was just going to make a plug.
Okay.
For?
For the changes that have happened in the Opera House and just, if, if people were here at the one-twenty-fifth just recently, that happened, I mean, that one-twenty-fifth celebration thing was a huge, huge, huge amount of work. And, and it took, you know, the work of several people to pull that off. We paid for some of that, but we got in value probably two to three times or four, probably four times what we paid out in the people that pulled, to pull that off. You know, I don't want to make anybody embarrassed, but, you know, the work, the work that happened was, I mean, it was high qual. It was professional quality, high-quality stuff. And, you know, Terry did a great job on the camera work and Brian, everybody did a great job. But, you know, there was a significant amount of volunteer effort that went in to make it all happen. And I think we all know who that is, but. So it's, there's a lot of work that goes in. This fifteen thousand is only a small piece of the work that goes in to make this Opera House work. And so this, this is a small piece of the total of all the people that put in time and make this work.
So in the last twelve days, for the Friday night, old folks sit around and talk, eighty-eight people have watched that.
Wow.
Don't call it the old people.
I was going to say talking. The fireside chat.
The fireside. I, I. I didn't even know we owned a fireside.
Oh, nice pun.
To get back onto track here.
Yep.
I'm looking at the revenues. Bay Chamber was budgeted at seventy-seven hundred for this current year. And they're halfway through the year, they're over that or dried about it. But we dropped it to seventy-five hundred?
Seventy-seven's wrong.
This is line ten fifty-one.
Seventy-seven is wrong. Our contract says seventy-five.
Okay.
It says seventy-two.
Oh, his contract says seventy-two?
Our current contract is seventy-two-five. The next year, he has to redo the contract for this fiscal year and he's projecting a seventy-five. So the seventy-seven you're seeing for this fiscal year is wrong.
Oh.
So this isn't going to happen.
So what are we talking about then for this coming year?
Seventy-five.
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 Which is what the manager's number is.
Yeah. Bay Chamber's a great asset to the community and everything, but with all the upgrades that we are, we have done, should we not maybe be expecting a little bit more? I mean, new sound system, new screen, new this, new that.
Or is that just part of the cost of doing business, staying up with the times? We are, we continue to be generous to Bay Chamber. They continue to be generous to us. The, the big-ticket items that we've spent money on have no particular effect on them.
Okay.
But, you know, they are in favored status. And it's a, it's a contractual thing that, it's a fine line. I mean, negotiations are like that. It's a really fine line.
But, I mean, you, with all this equipment we put in, they could broadcast from up there, couldn't they?
That is a very interesting idea that actually.
I mean, that could be something, that could be a step which would make us as a town look great and would give them, you know, would give them a lot of publicity too. So I, I wouldn't step on that one. I wouldn't squash that one before we got there.
But, but that wouldn't, that would not come in under yearly negotiations, that would be an event charge.
Right, that would be a special event.
And that is, that's something that Terry Lee has already started talking with Monica about?
No, I haven't started yet.
We just leaked that right out. There you go.
Monica knows now.
It's still researching it, but the idea is utilizing the resources that we already have in place, like live stream and these cameras. So if looking into ways of, well, can we sell, help them sell tickets through live stream so people out of town could watch it, share the profits on that and maybe recoup, or at least recoup some of our costs and using live stream.
Pay-per-view.
Well, listen.
And, and again, as exciting as that is in the weeds, there is, we would have to up our live stream, so that's fifteen, yeah. There are some very good people working on very good ideas on behalf of the long-term.
But on a day-to-day basis, they aren't getting a big boost to what they do with what we've already done.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, and that's, I think.
Although, I mean, obviously the very biggest thing for them is the air conditioning in the summertime. And that, we poured a lot of money into that and that's hugely important, but you can't say, yeah, finally it works. Give us more money.
We haven't had it for the past five years and we've been.
My other one is on the Opera House rental line, revenue line. We're showing, the budget this year is twelve thousand. Halfway through the year, we're at seventy-two fifty-eight, but we're still showing twelve thousand as a projection for next year.
I have a tendency, I have a tendency to, to budget revenues low. I, I don't like to, I don't like to bump revenues up too much. I mean, you probably could, but my tendency is to budget revenues conservatively.
You know, we're becoming more friendly and we're being able to sell online, that should encourage more groups to come in and.
We can revisit it next year when we get fifteen, so. Well, yeah, but Rick's problem is that if we fall short, where does it come from? That's, that's. No, we understand, yeah.
Yeah. And one last thing, and this really goes back to like the purchasing contractor to capital or something like that. We were talking about redoing outside lighting, not necessarily outside this door, but up on the front.
Yeah.
Is that still going to be done this year or do we need to?
That will, will, you know, depending on how things play out, we can, we'll, we have money in the reserves to say, to go back to the board and say, okay, can we, now we have money, do we want to spend it on lighting, replacing the old Grossman lights that are outside?
You know, we, what did we say? We're somewhere around, after taking that extra ten thousand out, we're still at forty-nine thousand or forty-eight thousand.
So to, to give you a direct answer to that, because usually the select board would look to the Opera House Committee, for instance. At the last meeting, they said extra product, now, they love talking about aesthetics and they're going to go talking about the lighting for the next twelve meetings. But what hit the, what hit the, when they, when we said, okay, what are the priorities for this fifty-eight K? And they went HVAC completion, they went floor, and then they went trailer to store. There's a really compelling reason to spend about nine grand on a trailer for the, and we would save on labor and we'd save on space on the chairs going in and out to be stored. So that's, those are the three things and lighting didn't even come close. But it's also much more minor than any of the other three expenses.
Yeah, because I see the building in use, but it's all dark. Yeah. But we know, you can see people going in and out and the building is, the facade is dark. You don't wash a light on there to, you know, it's a beautiful building now.
One thing I've noticed that I don't know who's doing it, whether it's Terry or who's doing it, which makes, I think makes a difference, is the windows are getting opened, the, the,
Interior.
The interior windows are getting open sometimes at night.
We opened them up for the one-twenty-fifth.
Right. So it lets in some light, so if, if we're not counting on the windows being totally dark, when you drive by, it seems, it looks nice because when, when it was all lit up inside and decorated, you could see driving by and it looked more active. It didn't, it did make it look like it was being used, which was being used, which I, I think that's a nice improvement. I understand that there's a reason for closing the, there's a lot of times, there's a reason for closing those blinds or whatever you call those shutters.
To answer a little more of that question, I think the prices of the stuff Jeff is talking about is up here somewhere and we can do the lights down here.
Right.
I'm, I'm going to continue to look into the lights and update them. Some number of hours in the evening when it's dark, the people are going by, somehow lighting up the front of the building so that they.
Right, I agree.
See our jewel here.
Increasing rentals.
And down, you know, downwash light so it's not blasting up, not like Rockland.
Yes, I got one.
That's cool, Ken.
Yeah.
The Personnel Services two-two-zero-six custodian, part-time. What are the responsibilities of that custodian? And I only ask because there's also a professional cleaning services line for two thousand and I'm just curious what the custodian does.
The custodian is, is, does everything, cleaning and repairs, moving furniture. It's much more than just the cleaning.
Okay.
And then the professional cleaner is that once a year, somebody comes in, is it once a year?
Randy takes time off occasionally.
Yeah.
And so someone has to help me keep this clean when he's not here. For example, the last week in March, the first week in April, he's going to be gone. So we, Linda Thomas, who I think cleans for the town office.
But don't we have like somebody come in and do a major cleaning that?
We have in the past couple of years, we have come in and do a.
Right. And you'll see a similar, you'll see a similar line in, it's fire, is in the safety complex, the safety building, public safety, there's a, a, to have the floors all waxed, so that's like an annual thing that is beyond the normal day-to-day cleaning stuff.
That's the professional line?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Are we done with the Opera House?
Yep.
All right. We're now going to cemetery.
Thanks, Terry. Thanks, Mike.
Oh, you're still here?
I'm still here.
The mic's still on.
Now Linda gets to come over.
It's been about two hours, the heat's turned off. Yeah, is the heat off again, Terry?
Yeah, it probably is.
Coming over here, Linda, right?
Mike, can you check the heat for us?
Oh, yeah.
But I'm thinking this is the most comfortable meeting I've had.
Is it time to cut into Sharon's cake?
It's your meeting.
I think it's time to cut into Sharon's cake.
Okay, good break.
Hundred watts a person.
Oh, I'm not nervous. Everybody, believe it or not, I'm doing better.
Helen, I ignore it.
Thanks for giving me this one too. I'm sorry.
Oh, what did you call this group?
We're a band of heathens.
Oh, man, I'm never going to get up. I did. Yeah, oh, I will, yeah.
It's okay, I can sneak by and I know there's a.
We're trained professionals.
Yeah, actually, it would be a good idea, safety-wise, to have a fluorescent piece of tape across it. Yeah, no, seriously, I mean.
I'm, I'm not kidding.
How are you?
Are they yummy?
Yes.
Oh, there they are, spoons.
Yeah, right there. Forks are by the spoon. The spoon.
Okay.
Okay, Sharon, I'm digging in. That's good. Oh, that's a good one. What is it?
Coconut and a pound on top, it's got oatmeal in it, so you can pretend it's healthy.
So it's got what in it?
It's got oatmeal on top, so you can pretend it's healthy.
It's got oatmeal in it. Oh, so you can pretend it's healthy. Okay.
Stretch it out, chiefie. Stretch it out, Bob. Do some yoga.
It's the mental yoga right now.
Mental yoga.
I like that.
Mental yoga?
Yeah.
Ooh, it's warming up. Thank you for whoever pushed the button.
Mental yoga.
So, how you doing? I'm here.
All over the equipment.
You know, that's sad. Three? You know, with those big lazy ones? I'm all, these are horrible and you should not get them. No, not you, you're not allowed to have any. These are good. You sure you have a sandwich? Yeah, really, sandwich, sandwich is good for you. Or do you like, do you like honeydew?
I mean, the work that you all bring up on the one-twenty-fifth.
Grandmother told me. Well, I appreciate that. But I just, I don't, I talked to that office and you don't know how I actually am.
Like four thousand dollars more to you than I do.
Oh, okay. Fine, they keep worrying, that's fine. I appreciate it.
Like I worry about somebody. They're last. It's supposed to be this.
Sorry for it.
I ran into June Gara at the town office this morning and I'm like, where were you last night? She's like, was I supposed to be somewhere? I said, we missed you, you were supposed to be there. Said, Bill and I took care of it, don't worry about it. I'm so tired of being in this room. Oh, I watched someone, uh Oh, next.
Cemeteries.
Cemeteries, okay, so, talk about mowing contracts. If he wasn't there. So, are we only gonna have that one meeting on Wednesday to try to get all these numbers straight? Yeah, cause I'm kind of concerned, we have a lot of big decisions to make, and we have a lot of numbers to play off of each other. And I kinda feel like it's gonna take us more than one bout at it, to feel comfortable that we've done the right thing in the right places.
Yeah.
Um, cause there's a lot of moving parts this, this year.
Theory, we could, uh, we could make, take a second tonight, and do it on the seventeenth.
So I can just be here all day long?
Well, and the thing is
Me, they're mine. I hear him talking about me back there. No, I said, I didn't want She wants the lazy ones that I like.
She said she wanted a lace cookie over the chocolate.
Yeah, um, so you're talk, we're thinking about doing Thursday?
You could.
I mean, I, I just, I don't even, I mean, I know we've gotta get it done, but I just, it's just such a big batch of stuff.
Can you do a real quick look up and see if this room is being used Thursday night, seventeenth?
Seventeenth, I can look at the
The library will be here during the day. Eleven oh one, I mean, eleven oh three.
We came here two times before we can leave the house. We actually moved in eighty-six. Here, Thursday.
What are you, what are you thinking of?
Hurricane haze.
With all the changes we are looking at, and putting back in, and discussing what the impact is, and then renegotiating it. Four hours, gonna be enough.
McCormick didn't wanna sell right away.
Meeting and actually take our votes.
So, we're sitting out over in front of
And Ken won't be able to be here on, uh, until
And we met, I don't know how we met yet, Brandon, all of a sudden, there's, we're sitting there, I'm sitting there in the Audi, Alan had gone in to get some papers and things, and there's a window, I asked for, you know, to Grandaddy, and he says, I got five sugars.
N R S.
McCormick's house, plus syrup, so, I said, Vayner, Mr. Ingram.
You got another half hour, forty-five minutes to go, buddy.
Just did that. Oh, my god, please don't make me He said, yep.
I didn't know you took today off, I'm on the call.
How did he know?
One thing, he showed some property out, and we miss, I guess it's a, miss, yeah, all that way. We've been, uh, we've met, we had a
Updated March calendar.
It's our Realtor, but she was working for Camden Realty at the time.
Updated March calendar.
I just cracked up, and then, other things.
Celtic Roots upstairs at seven P M.
Yeah.
That's what I had. They will be doing a lot of stomping. I don't think so.
We had an Audi, and Alan had driven, cause I was still working.
Tracy and I were just talking, that with everything that we had been pointing out, where we may wanna be making changes, starting at three o'clock on Wednesday, expecting it to be done by seven o'clock, so we can come into the public meeting and make our votes at evening.
So it was, it was just
Rest down, oh, man.
Oh, yeah, and I thought, oh, wow, this is gonna be cool.
And you wanna start the public meeting?
That's so funny.
Yeah, it, it really, I mean, cause, I mean, I was from
But he, he used the time product. I don't think we wanna be discussing this for more than four hours.
He got done when he needed his stuff.
That's true. And so, looking at where else can we squeeze something in. Um, I know on Tuesday, the fifteenth
Yeah, just love to know what's going on.
This room is booked at six P M. for that Solarize Midcoast Main presentation.
That makes up into cupcakes, nice, too. Thinking every time I die, oh, I
Well, I mean, the option is to meet whatever the heck you want, and not meet
Well, that's true, but
My other email address is tomato gal.
It's like the maritime, I mean maritime academy.
Oh, no, different varieties taste so different from each other.
Now, they created a bank.
They do?
That wasn't there previously.
Comes up seal approval.
That's not
There's a lot of each, each sold on gene pool.
And we have, really need to have it done, so the budget committee
Yeah, it's not close enough to
There's so many.
I bought a tomato plant at the, I forget which one, I see, it was a garden club sale. One of the miniature
I knew there was something on the seventeenth, cause what's going on?
But he didn't know about his calculator collection.
Like, we booked the sixty-four.
And those two days are when they're interviewing.
I told Billy, don't worry about it.
Architects are making their presentation.
I like, everything's made from, but I don't like the tomato sauce, it's a texture.
Yes, he is.
And where they have windows, and look like almost a porch or a deck type thing.
On the front? Yeah.
So he's getting paid, and he's getting So, March sixteenth, is that, is it architect's thing?
Reverse. Yes, sixteen and
Please tell me that noise was
Eleven to three thirty. Well, no, they say, what, architect, the architect presentation
I was hoping that was just like
Is that what that sounded?
Two forty-five. For what purpose, though? Mark, you missed the golden opportunity. Too much shade? No, no, it's just like a black We should be done by three, we hope.
Okay.
Chimes.
Well, that
He wanted it, and I wouldn't give it to him.
I was like, come on, hit me.
It's nice having some perennial food. Mark, you missed your chance.
Sidebar.
As you are, as you are.
Are you gonna bring us back drinks from the sidebar?
No, sir. Something that goes with Pepsi?
Seriously.
You know, seven, seven and seven, rum and coke.
There are no bars around here.
I asked for a bar last night.
Except for maybe a sidebar, apparently. Jack and Taser, Jack and Taser, they're getting antsy over there.
The rest of the evening, you need to start giving some thought, when are we gonna hold all of our
Yes, we are, no, we haven't done cemeteries.
Last one's at nine.
We're supposed to do cemeteries at seven o'clock.
Right now, it's looking four hours, and gonna be enough.
No, we're supposed to do cemeteries at seven.
Are you talking about the amount of questions that I've been asking?
No, I'm talking about the na, the amount of discussions that the five of us are gonna have.
The five of us going over this and making drawings about line by line.
Page one to page nine.
And right now, we only have from three to seven on Wednesday, and I don't think that's gonna be At the same time, Monday night, we already have a regular select board meeting.
With an executive session in the fore.
I'm not coming.
But I do.
I know, but I'm not coming, because I'm so tired of being in this building already, and then Wednesday
And there's no way of doing any heavy lifting, either.
I'm working, it's bad. Can't do any of that.
And TJ Maxx, and I had to skip my break, tidily fifteen minutes early to get here, so.
But at the same time, I feel like it's a big hindrance on our bill.
Thankfully, the budget, my schedule comes out early enough, I can get my time off scheduled, you know.
I know, and I get it.
Yeah, you know, we use one.
Why? And I was like, well, I've got a budget, and she's like, why do you have to go to that? It's like, cause I'm on it, and she goes, no, you're not. She's like, you have to be elected for that, I'm like, yeah, eight months' time.
But you can at least get my frustration.
Yeah.
I, I think everybody gets started, that one happened, but was Tracy asking why? I was like, Tracy asked me why, and I was like, well, I don't want to, I'm like, but if you're writing
You gotta be here.
I guess I'll do it.
It doesn't take much. Well, I figured I'd have to have at least ten.
That's what we do with Stevie's. We actually could, will be inspired.
This has been my first
My husband got me on it, he told our tenants, and then he told me he'd written me in, so I wrote myself in. There were like, four of us that got five votes that year, I was the only one in the series of being on it, but he was just a disjunctive, I guess.
Who wants to be where?
No, I'll, I'll do it.
Midcoast Solid Waste versus the budget committee.
A dance-off.
We'll have John French, it'll be good.
They want the town office, they've got the town office.
Were their meetings on the twenty-third?
Twenty, yeah, they have to go to the second night, cause they're budget discussion.
I mean, Midcoast Solid Waste has to move over here.
You know, every team's like
He's looking at us like, what, huh?
We don't need them, we're gonna televise that. Well, we're doing the one on the twenty-first on Monday, this is a regular board meeting.
Tracy, I may fight you over these. Oh, would you change? But I might fight you over these.
Okay, shall we, you wanna get started again?
Yes.
They're closer to me.
Okay.
Where are they?
We're gonna get, we're gonna get started again, we're at cemeteries.
In May.
Page, well, one sixty-two and one sixty-three. Right off
There's a reason why, let me talk to it.
You have a line there, it has no number under capital items called reserve account.
Mm-hmm.
The cemeteries don't have a reserve account, they have the perpetual care account, and their investment funds, which are replenished through the earnings on the account, and that's where we withdraw money, when they earn enough, so we can withdraw over and above what the perpetual care amount is.
Right, that was, uh, Linda wanted that in for the, um, uh
Colombarium.
Colombarium thing, some, some means of putting in something for the columbariums.
Uh, then we should have named that columbarium.
It's to create a reserve account, correct, is that what you're? But I, I pulled it out, is, we're not, the idea that creating new reserve accounts at this point, um, that, that got pulled out, but that's the only place that there was any reduction in that budget, I believe.
And the five thousand that you show under your cemetery trust fund, revenues coming out five thousand? That was what the investment committee recommended.
Yes, okay.
Now, I would, I'd make an editorial comment, that if we do the columbarium, I would recommend that we take that money from the trust fund, provided it is above the perpetual care line, and then replenish it as we sell them, it's an investment. I would just throw that out.
Are we allowed to do that, is correct, because that's for, that's for the maintenance of the cemeteries.
It's for cemetery improvements. Over and above, over and above what the perpetual care amount is, remember, there's two amounts in there. There's restricted amount, which is the amount that gone in through the perpetual care donations, and then there's all the earnings above it.
But the point was, is we were taking out more than the earnings, so we still
Oh, the perpetual care.
We were just talking about that, Tracy and I, where we were trying to figure out, was that what the investment committee had said we were drawing too much out of that? You're saying it was perpetual care, not the trust fund?
That was the trust fund, but they were withdrawing more than what the perpetual care was earning.
Okay.
It, it started years ago.
Which is funny, because there's only one
That's right.
Uh, one revenue line for perpetual care funding.
Yeah.
What happened in twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, fourteen, fifteen?
We're, we're getting numbers confused here.
Okay, we have a terminology issue here, that we need to clarify, because now I'm totally confused. So, who over there can explain the cemetery fund? I don't, I'm, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot.
When I sell a cemetery lot.
Okay.
Let's say the lot is three hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-five dollars goes into the sale of the lot. Two hundred and seventy-five dollars goes into perpetual care.
Okay.
Okay, so perpetual care goes into a fund that makes money. That money that the investment committee came in and talked to us about, that is now totally slipping through the swiss cheese of my brain, he said that we were taking too much out every year, right?
He said, so what's happened is our investments have lost money over the last several months. And our fear is, is that the market's not gonna come back. So, if we continue to take out large sums of money, that is going to cut into the interest that we have available, because we continue to lose money on the interest, so, so we have money that has to stay there, we can't touch that. So, what is above and beyond that balance is becoming smaller and smaller and smaller because of the money we're losing.
Right, so there's nothing to take out, to put into a columbarium, I can't say that word.
Columbarium.
Columbarium, or anything else, and that's why we're reducing it to taking five thousand dollars out, rather than the fifteen that we had budgeted for this current year.
I don't feel comfortable with the term, we don't have the money, cause technically we do, but the recommendation to keep our investments solid, for lack of a better word, is to not take more than five thousand dollars.
Right, and that's what I was, that's the number I had in my brain, but I don't, he had charts, didn't he?
And on the same vein of clarifying confusion, I'm still a little confused why perpetual care has no numbers in fiscal years twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen, and fourteen, fifteen, and only has one coming in year-to-date today, or in, in this
An expenditure of five hundred and fifty dollars.
Fiscal year.
Twelve oh one is in revenues.
Oh, in revenues.
Are twelve oh one.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And it's five hundred and fifty dollars in this year.
And according to what Linda was saying, every time we sell a cemetery plot, there should be a portion going to this perpetual care line, did we not sell any lots in those years?
Yes, we did.
Well, five fifty, it just happens to be two seventy-five times two.
Yeah, so why is it that suddenly we had two
So, yeah, how do we, I guess, how do we keep track of that two hundred and seventy-five dollars? Where do we, how do we, how do we funnel it through us and into the investment account?
It's done with our audit.
So, but it, so it doesn't show up here at all?
It, it will, at the end of the year, when we do our general ledger balances, uh, cause we don't post our gains and losses in the investments until the end of the fiscal year, when we start our audit process.
So it's
So, when we start that process, then that money will start to get transferred and be moved out.
So the seventy-five dollars for the sale appears where?
Sale of lots.
Seventy dollars, yeah, so that's the sale of lots, which for this year, we've taken in a hundred and fifty dollars?
Two lots.
We only sold two lots?
Okay.
To date.
Which matches the five fifty, two, two, two lots.
Right, so that's, but
I guess I'm still confused why there's no numbers. Right, I, I
That's, that's because it gets transferred.
Gets rolled out.
Oh, it's not gonna show there.
So it pops up only in like, year-to-date, and then it gets transferred to another different line?
Correct, yes.
Because the balance for it isn't here anywhere.
And it gets transferred to which one, the trust?
It will get transferred to the Bar Harbor, the investment that we have with Bar Harbor Trust.
Okay.
Shouldn't there be a line that shows what the trust is, so we can see where it goes?
Do we have that?
It's, but that's not part of the budget, so she, there is a line, but she doesn't have it in this sheet of paper, because
There, there's whole, there's a whole budget, I mean, there's a whole investment, uh, document that's put together at the end of every month, that shows our investments and how, how they're doing, if they've lost money, if they gained money, where we are in terms of that amount that has to stay in there, and what is available for withdrawal.
I'm just thinking in supporting information, so that this question isn't asked year after year, where, why is this like this? You could have that brief explanation of supporting information, so we could dispense with that question.
That's certainly something we could look at, putting in, in the budget as a whole document, maybe not necessarily
Cause this, I mean, the document we have now is light years better than it used to be, when I was on the select board, there were always questions year after year, and you could count on people asking them, but there was no way to save that historical information and, and put it into something useful, like this document, so that you could if you read everything and all the supporting information, you'd have a grasp of how the budget works, without actually sitting through one of these meetings. We would just need another line for, for, uh, that says how the trust fund, you know, where the We would just need another line for, for, uh, that says how the trust fund, you know, where the money rolls into the trust fund, off, off of the bu- budget, off of the budget. Revenue line blank goes here, and this does this, and, and just a, a two, three sentence synopsis.
Oh, can that be similar, Megan, to the pass-through that you're saying that you're gonna be doing in anticipation of the next? Tracy's question about, uh, with the Opera House and, and the officers, we know that that's a pass-through. Security, thank you, we know it's a pass-through, is there a similar process we can do to help us explain these shifting lines?
When they shift, they don't shift into another revenue account, they shift into a general ledger account, which aren't shown on any of these budgets, and then it's taken from that general ledger account, it's withdrawn, and a check is sent to Bar Harbor, and they deposit that money. So, if you look at the investment information, it will show as a deposit for, for X amount of dollars that was taken in in revenue.
So, it starts to make sense in the auditing time period.
Can I just say also about cemetery, I am so happy that the stipend for the assistant sexton went up, like, I am thrilled, because this was an issue with me last year, that I thought it was a little bit sad that he was getting the same thing every year and every year. It just makes me happy, and I'm really glad that someone thought of that.
May I ask, um, how much is a columbarium, and how many people will it hold?
If I could put my Ken hat on, depending on the look, feel, material...
Don't put that hat on, I don't wanna hear that.
The price range could be broad, uh, also depending on the size of requirements, it can be an extremely efficient way of handling people.
Just wondering what we're thinking about.
Linda has numbers.
I, I do, we, Helen and I, um, at a cemetery meeting with the other members, we had, uh, someone from Collette's out of Lewiston come give us a presentation. They showed us several colum- columbariums, this is kind of the one I liked. That's probably the Rock of Ages made in Vermont, which is the best. So, you never have to worry about, um, repairs to this type of, um, columbarium. It's not gonna leak, one person goes in each one. This one probably would cost, if I remember right, is something like eight hundred dollars or more.
Per uni- per...
Per niche.
Per niche.
Yes.
So you buy, so you buy it fit to the size that, that you are interested in?
To actually do one that has like, um, I think it had somewhere like a hundred or somewhere around there, it will cost like about eighty thousand dollars. You can go lower, um, he did say that there was, um, one that's made in China, that, believe it or not, is quite nice, and that one would be maybe three hundred and something.
For a hundred people?
No, per niche.
Per niche, so that one is a little bit, you know, less expensive, it still would look nice, it still would hold up and not, uh, like, have a lot of maintenance, and they would be willing to, um, take care of the maintenance of that. So, we only have thirty-four cremation lots left at Seaview.
How many?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. You sell how many a year, would you say? I know it very, I know it very true.
I would say six to eight a year.
Okay.
But we have closed it to non-residents, if it was open to, um, non-residents, we would sell a lot more. So, we could open it back up, and we would charge maybe three times more for a non-resident to buy a niche, because it's three fifty for a resident, fourteen hundred for a non-resident, for one lot at the present time.
Does the thirty-four cremation lots count by the culvert area?
No, it's the, it's where there's presently space for cremations only. There's thirty-four, four-by-four lots available.
Which cemetery?
Seaview, and that's where everybody wants to buy a lot, and especially with people from Camden.
One, one other thing that, that gentleman from Collette, Collette, uh, mentioned was that we were way underpriced.
Yes.
Well, yeah. For the residents, I'm sure if it costs eight hundred...
For non-residents, he implied that we were underpriced.
If it costs somewhere between three fifty and eight hundred, depending on quality, per, per niche, then we are very, very underpriced.
We're gonna get one of these.
There's a fly.
They have to be really slow-moving at this time of year.
Yeah.
I had one, and, and heaven couldn't agree with you more, uh, Mr. Farley does a, a ton of work. I'm just curious, these numbers do contrast the statement of he hasn't had a raise. When you look at fourteen, fifteen, that number's clearly higher, unless it was an additional add-on because of far above and beyond...
I don't know what happened that that made that go up.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we haven't changed it, I don't know why that number is definitely...
Well, why is... Linda very clearly pointed out to me that he's the assistant sexton, and if he stopped doing it, I'm the sexton, and so...
You only gave him twen- nineteen percent raise?
Into the cemeteries, Mike.
If David retires, it's gonna cost you a lot more than twenty-five hundred dollars, and you're going to really have to hire someone, in my opinion, for at least part-time, for so many months of the year.
So, if David's happy, I'm happy.
Right.
Okay.
Simple clarification, uh, the line between fifty-three forty and fifty-four fifteen, Glencoe Cemetery WKSP Supplies?
Workshop.
Workshop.
Workshop, okay, thank you.
Cleaning and cleanings.
Yeah, that was...
Yeah.
Going, going to the, what they call other contractual services, cemetery associations, I know we have five, but every year it's been two thousand, it's been withdrawn, supposedly they get five hundred each.
Correct. They're supposed to write their request when they're ready to get their money, and evidently, one person isn't doing that. And finance could answer that question better than I.
I honestly have no idea, that's the first time I've heard of it, so I'd have to look into that.
Do you know which cemetery that is?
No, we, we would have to look back at the record.
I thought, uh, Ruben Hall Yard wasn't, uh, doing anything for a while.
They, they never did get anything, it's, it's Seaview, West Rockport, Rockville, Glencoe, Amspire, it's just the five.
I know West Rockport and Rockville get their application in every year, 'cause that's how they funded me.
I think it may be Glencoe, that's my guess.
And another question, yeah, I'm that guy, um, the, in the supplemental information, the first line, three, three, two, five, the water company expects, uh, that the two small projects will amount to an increase of about two point five percent. That got me thinking about, uh, Rockville Cemetery specifically, their water supply that they have there is very much intermittent. It depends on how much is flowing from Mirror Lake, because it has to do an anti-gravitational climb up the hill to actually get to the spout. Um, and I didn't know, were those projects at all related to Rockville's ability to have a consistent water supply? Or is that just additional main water, general things? What was that, two small projects, do you know what those are?
I, right off the top of my head, no.
Okay.
I thought we fixed the water.
Well, we fixed it when the guy wrecked it with the backhoe.
Yeah, and like I said, it's intermittent, sometimes I could put a hose onto it and run, 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 and be fine.
Which cemetery?
Rockville.
Oh, okay, that's not the one.
So, there's no water at the old cemetery, but there's water at the new spot, and you, you just, if there's not an abundance of pressure coming down the main line, it doesn't make its way up there, and so you gotta go fill up a jug to water your flowers, and the thing is, talking to Vern Hunter about it, the general assessment is it would be relatively expensive for probably not a huge amount of gain.
Right.
But on what you're talking about, to the people that come, and they wanna water granddad's flowers and grandma's flowers, it is a big deal. So, balancing that in my head, the substantial costs for very few people realizing that gain, but, I don't know.
Maybe we put a little sign there, if no pressure here, go to the spigots, it's over there.
No, there is no, there's one spigot.
Oh, I think you said you walked over somewhere else and filled it up.
Actually, what I ended up doing...
I could donate a stainless steel water urn.
I drive my truck filled with buckets to West Rockport. I fill up my buckets at the West Rockport Cemetery, and then drive back to Rockville and gravity feed out of those barrels to Cleanstone.
Okay.
That seems awful.
What are you gonna do, you gotta have water, and they don't have water.
Do we have anything else on?
Way behind.
R E S Es.
R E S Es, Mike Young still.
Better than splitting them up all over the...
Yeah, musical chairs.
Dr. Young.
And this, this is where the ball field backstop was put in, uh, to, you know, replace that backstop that's kinda leaning over, it's been leaning over for years, uh, I had put it in, but took it out, uh, to, to meet the LD one. Otherwise, everything else, I think, I didn't, don't think I made any other change or changes to that budget.
Um, something to look into, because most of the money that we got to demo, demo the building came from the TIF fund.
Right.
Can we take money from the TIF fund to do that?
I didn't realize that that's where that came from. So, the TIF, which TIF?
The Commercial Street TIF.
Oh, okay, you know, we can look into that.
Is that like a health and safety thing, the, the backstop, like if kids get on that and it goes over? 'Cause you don't, if people, people aren't there, and if kids are there playing, and they decide, oh, that looks like a fun thing to climb on.
Attractive nuisance used to be the legal term.
I mean, the option is take it down, but then there's no backstop.
It's still used, particularly for like kids' T-ball and junior ball, and those balls go any which way.
Right, yep.
But it's about seventy-five hundred bucks to replace it, it's been on the list for, what, three or...
This is the second year, I guess.
Second year? Yeah, I don't...
I think it was like utilities and, I mean, there was a very specific list of things. But I don't think something like that would make the list for the TIF.
Okay.
Just off the top of my head.
Yeah, unless it was listed in the original document, um, for, uh, repair.
You know, I, I thought we had thing, you know, within their public improvements.
Uh, I thought it was more like, um, uh, oh, what's the word I'm looking for? Didn't we do some drainage stuff or something? Something like that, but not this kind of improvement. Yeah, and I don't even, it might have been before your time.
A hundred and eighteen thousand out.
To...
But that was to demolish it, I mean, we could probably take out five hundred dollars to demolish the backstop, but that's not gonna make many people happy, but I don't know if that money could be used to actually put a new backstop in. I mean, you can look into it, but...
We, we can look into it, but I, my guess is that unless it specifically has some language in there, that, that, for that kind, that kind of thing, we, we'd have a tough time getting the money out, but it's worth, it's worth looking.
Could you ask Legacy Rockport?
Insert.
To think about that as a, uh, it's a real legacy for Rockport, to see if they can free up funds for me.
They have a meeting, they don't have any money.
Hey, excuse me.
I, I did have my hand up.
I know that.
Um, I did wanna say, I recall this conversation last year, and I remember saying, is, are there businesses that we could approach to put back stops along there, so that when you're driving up ninety or Route one, you stop, you can, they would get some visibility and see, and I, I specifically think that we came up with a few businesses to potentially approach. I don't know if that is something that you'd like to go forward with or not.
You mean to get them to donate their backstop?
Yeah, just as a conver- yeah, like, there were a few businesses we could approach. Anybody out there who's watching would like to volunteer, I mean, it is a, a great visibility opportunity, it's not a billboard, but it is something that would be, um, a good, common goodwill factor for a business, for the kids.
I agree, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
It's, it, I mean, we just gotta...
Okay, right.
That's, that's what I'm thinking, is we'd probably violate our own side ordinance, side ordinance.
Okay, yep, no, you're, you have, that's what, you have to be the, 'cause if you knew...
Right.
I will put it on the recreation committee's agenda.
In, in compliance with the sign ordinance.
Doesn't it? Anyone else watching on television, if you wanna join the recreation committee and become chair, so I don't have to put things on the agenda, I would love that.
I have a question, although it's a minor one, the, the sewage debt fees, they were up, and now they're, you're putting them down. Why would it change the debt fees, I don't know, I would presume, I don't know what your, whatever it is, your equivalent, your person equivalent is, but whatever that is, is what you would pay, and it shouldn't change over time, by much. We set our wa- wastewater fees, so they don't change that much.
I thought it was around forty-five dollars a quarter.
A quarter, right, so...
It doesn't, and why was it, um, sixteen hundred?
Right, why did it go up, and then it came down?
Well, that was when it was still connected.
Oh, when it was still part of the, the school.
Yeah, we still had sprinkler system in there.
So then it wasn't, that wasn't just debt fees, but now that it's just debt fees, those should be pretty much the same.
So, we have it as...
But it's all over the place.
Right.
You know, two seventy-three, two thirty-eight, well, those, those were right, yeah, those would have been going down. But why one seventy-five, and now one hundred, no, those are wrong.
Right, that doesn't seem right, we need to look at whatever it is.
Do you know where Sue got that?
Do you know where Sue got that number?
No, I'll have to check.
Did we get a bill from Main Water quarterly?
We do.
So, yeah, because we set that rate, we should know that answer. Okay, sorry, that one just didn't make sense to me.
That's only because it's going by the property.
Right, right, 'cause they're not currently using it.
So, what would the debt fee be normally, forty-five dollars?
It was like forty-three, forty-four, a quarter, or something like that.
It changes every year, depending on, you know...
When we do wastewater.
Yeah, which we're not doing until May.
Right, so just look at last year's wastewater budget and see what we put in.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah.
I don't know who's calling on people.
I've got two that I think of, um, and one's quick, it's just the mowing, and it's on the same line as the seeing trends of the cemetery going down, and just curious about where it is on its contractor, just if, if there are contractors that are going down in price, and other contractors are going up, I know you have to wait for...
That one, I believe, is coming up with all...
That's Claybrook that does that one.
Right, we extended it, it will end when all the other contracts...
And Claybrook also, I saw them doing Marge Jones, they do Marge Jones, don't they, as well? Okay.
I think this was all included in that parks, it's included in the, that same bed that the parks in Rock had.
Oh, really?
I think is when that bid comes up.
Yeah.
So, that number is also in...
Correct.
Okay, and they do the Harbor Park too, right?
Yes.
And the only other question that I had was about the revenues and the kind of odd lines on the rental income and the miscellaneous, where did we get almost five thousand dollars from in thirteen, fourteen?
Main full of worship.
Cool, and why did the rental incomes drop so dramatically?
When Cellador...
Oh!
Still doing Pop the Cork.
Yeah, Pop the Cork there, and then she switched down to the Harbor, gotcha. She basically the only one?
Pretty much, there was, and then the main, um, magazine.
Yeah, boat, they had that Harbor boat and house show there, yeah, I remember that, but... Do we have a line item in here for promoting and trying to get more of those? 'Cause if those are big-money items, and we've got that whole spot laying vacant for decent periods of time, do we have a line that, similar to the Opera House, and trying to drum up more business to come?
I know, we need a website.
As I love to promote the town, that's sort of fixed to other things that are happening, so someone's gonna do their research if they have a large thing where they need parking. Unless you're saying an event, an event there.
Right, like that Harb- the boats, house, and whatever, they were trucking people from the high school, they were parking at the high school and then bussing people down.
Right.
No?
Yeah, it's...
It was a very bad thing.
Yeah.
That was not a good week, yeah, that was not a good week, I know Mike remembers that way, too.
Well, as a private citizen, it was enjoyable.
That's good.
Yeah?
That's good, I'm glad you enjoyed it.
Yeah, I did.
If you wanna make money on it.
Clean up after yourself or anything.
The property. The property. People would yell at me if I promoted that.
I would yell at you if you promoted that.
Well, thank you.
Moving on.
Can we move on?
Shall we go to County E nine-one-one and dispatch?
We have to pay for it next.
Just for the cemetery.
Which is where?
One fifty-seven. Yeah, like there's no choice on this, is there?
There's bills.
It is what it is, right?
There's the bill.
Leaving.
Yep.
Not much you can do here.
We can do.
Much as I know that that's not.
You scoot down or you just go down?
Derek's County.
Uh, Mark.
Mark, you wanna come down this way?
Okay, so we're just gonna say, wow, we did that and keep going. Okay.
And we go to page ninety-five.
Well, that was cool. We caught up a little.
Where's?
For the.
Now we're gonna get the fire department.
Ah, we get Chief County.
I'm with you, brother.
Oh, that's, okay, thank you.
Oh.
I can do that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yes.
It was very kind of you.
Um, Ken had quite an epistle here on.
Thank you, sir.
Police cruiser purchase. Um, basically, I think he wants to postpone purchases for a year.
I, I looked at that.
Yep.
Um, that was a place where I went, but the, the reality is it only nets us about fourteen thousand dollars. Uh, it didn't net what I thought, I thought it would, uh, you know, frankly, I was, I was looking at that, but.
And you buy two next year.
And, yeah, it just.
He was saying just slide them all, not one year.
But it, it doesn't net us what we, what I thought it would net us, you know, it, you know, forty, you know, for, for the, for the Tahoe is, what's that gonna cost us? Thirty-five, forty thousand?
It's thirty-eight-ish.
Yeah, okay.
Which is nine more than what it was six years ago, so.
So, you know, if it, if it had netted us that much money, I would've probably looked at making that cut, um, but I, where it only netted us, was it fourteen? Fourteen, um, I left it in. I mean, you're free to do whatever you, you'd like, but that's, that was my rationale. Cause I, I, I had that, I, I actually had that on the, on the list twice and Megan had to remind me though, that doesn't, that doesn't get us what we think it's gonna get us in dollars.
So I think it's the accounting cycle that I'm not sure of, but you have in the reserve account for police cruiser, like a little over twenty-three thousand dollars.
And I'm gonna use twenty to that, I believe.
You're going to, or?
To offset the thirty-nine that I'm, or thirty-nine.
Right, but. Right, but I'm looking at this budget as saying that you're gonna use police, police vehicle reserve of twenty-five thousand dollars, but there's not twenty-five thousand dollars in this, in the reserve account. So, then we were supposed to put three thousand dollars into that vehicle reserve account next year and that still just barely gets you the twenty-five that it looks like you wanna take out. Does that make sense?
I spoke to that issue with Megan and it was left the way, uh, I had knocked it back to twenty because I realized that if I wanted to try to keep my budget down, I would withdraw the three from the reserve that I was asking for and knock it back to twenty, which would keep me within what I have in the reserve line of twenty-three thousand and some.
Did he cut three thou?
Yeah.
I'm kinda, it doesn't add up to twenty-five.
I think I, I think I actually may have gotten in a cutting frenzy.
Right, so if you cut that three thousand, there's not twenty-five thousand in that.
Cause that, that is one.
So that can't offset the car that you wanna buy.
Right, and, and I, I, I think I mistakenly cut that one because that is, the, the logic I was trying to use with the reserves was not to cut things that rely on reserves to make payments to, and keep our cycle going. And this is one that, that does that. It's this one and the, the, uh, uh, fire reserves and public works. So, you know, we need to make those deposits so we keep the, the balance in there enough to make those payments. So this is one that I cut that I probably, I probably got carried away in the frenzy of.
So we should be putting three thousand into the reserve.
So we can take twenty-five out.
Right.
Well, we take twenty-five out or twenty out? If we take twenty-five out, we're down to like two thousand.
Right.
Which is fine, because when you sell the Tahoe, you're hopefully gonna get sixteen to put back into it.
Oh.
You're gonna be replenishing it with, that's the reason it's going down so drastic.
Okay.
Is because you're hopefully gonna get sixteen from what I'm told for the sale of it.
And that's where it goes.
Okay.
And we'll go back into that.
You're showing twelve thousand on the sale.
Yeah, and that was very conservative. I mean, I've been told higher, so.
Okay.
Quick question, has the cruiser that's currently for sale been sold?
Yes.
And how much did we get for that?
Six thousand and one dollars.
We've done, we've done well.
I'm not as tight as some around here, but I do all right.
Done very well.
Not you guys, sorry.
Making fun of us.
Yep.
Okay.
No, Bruce. I think he's speaking for those outside the town.
When I was here, you know. Well then, why don't we ever have anything in the sale of police vehicle line?
Yeah, cause it's a big one. It maybe gets shifted like the other one.
Since that's really going back into the reserve.
Yeah.
Shouldn't it be?
It's a secret.
Yeah, we.
I don't know.
It's a Jenny thing and.
We'll have to track, we'll have to track, we'll have to track that down.
Why we can't.
Yeah.
I mean, cause we could even be conservative on it, but at least we know it, something's coming.
Right.
Right.
Cause we are, we are cycling the vehicles out so they, when they still have some value.
Yeah.
Question. I asked the same question that I'm gonna ask of everyone.
He doesn't have any mowing.
Your training and.
Oh, it gives good peace of mind and I would if I could.
I didn't even hear the mowing.
I don't know.
Oh, the mowing?
No.
Sorry, I didn't hear. Uh, training and education, that's the last line on purchasing contractual services. Uh, Rick cut a thousand dollars out of that. It's the police force. Hey, man, I'm not holding it against you, you had to cut, but.
It's mainly based on the fact that we've only used, uh,
Three hundred and sixty dollars.
So far. Um, I'm, I'm a big advocate of training and education and I don't like cutting it. Um, I would prefer to see that budget get used up every year.
Yeah. When I call police, fire, public works, people like that, I, I want them to be as highly trained as we can get them to be.
A lot of what we do at the time is based on numbers up to December.
Yeah.
And, you know, so you may have a low usage, but there may be things coming up in the spring that don't, aren't reflected. And, you know, quite frankly, I mean, if I'm looking to replace an officer, uh, and it takes twenty-five hundred dollars to send him to school and I have to go to the pistol range once a year, that's six hundred. So I'm, I've used thirty-one hundred up. Yes, I could use a little more, but, you know, we'll do what we can do.
Yeah.
Aren't we facing, you should be sending another officer? You never know. I mean, we had somebody that was an academy graduate but chose not to come because he didn't like the hours he was gonna get, so.
So all things considered, when we have our powwow here, this is kind of important to me. Are you advocating for your number or Rick's number?
I'm advocating for the higher number too.
Okay, and once again, Rick, I'm not holding any of this against you.
And, and I understand the position we're in trying to come within, you know, the LD and, you know, certainly I would like to have more. I think probably the thirty-one hundred might be sufficient, uh, but that doesn't leave a lot of leeway for anybody to do anything beyond going to the pistol range and sending somebody to the academy, you know, so.
I may be paid to watch Cooley at the pistol range. Anyone wanna come in on a Cooley pistol range?
The officer we lost. Yes, sir. Was he still within that, what, four-year window? State of Maine is, is.
Three, three years.
Five, it's five years. State of Maine is doing its best it can to drag its feet in paying us. It's twenty-four thousand dollars they owe us.
Yeah.
Wow.
So anybody out there wanna send them a letter. Where would that show up in here? That would show up as revenue somewhere, wouldn't it? When we get it. Well.
Who knows?
I should talk to Dave Mirmart.
That's a good question. But, you know, but, you know, if it just shows up and we don't have it budgeted anywhere, it automatically goes to the U F B the next year.
It would go into miscellaneous reimbursement.
It could either go there or it could go training reimbursement.
And hopefully that would be, that would help offset the cost of the new person and the outfitting of the new person, et cetera.
Your, your throwaway line of it never has happened, which is to say it hasn't happened, they haven't not yet paid for this one or they've never paid for training that goes.
I'd have to think about it, but I don't know, we've ever gotten a check from anybody before because they've, they've been inside that five-year range.
Yeah.
You know, um, maybe once, but no, we haven't gotten a check from the state yet.
On, on this particular case?
On this particular one.
But as, as there's more and more vacancies around the state and there's, they have more and more difficulty filling positions, it becomes a situation of they're, they're willing to make the payment in order to fill empty slots.
Then we have to go through the training process.
Right.
I mean, Rockland just had, they had seven people apply, they got it down to two, they did oral boards on. Camden just lost a person to Kennebec County. I've lost one to the state police, so we're all experiencing the same thing and there is no pool of people.
Right.
You know, it's just the way it is.
And the other, the other place I made, uh, you know, fairly, a, a, a pretty good, uh, cut would be in, um, in the vehicle repair and maintenance and it's only, it's, it's a gamble, um, but it's in the fact that we have newer vehicles. Um, this, it's, I mean, it's always a gamble. It doesn't take much if there's something serious goes wrong.
So if something kicks the bucket, we would just have to overdraw and go into the U F B?
We'd come up with it someplace else, but, um, you, we'd have to come up with it someplace else. But we do have newer vehicles, so, you know, some of them, how many of our vehicles are in warrant, are any of them in warranty still?
Two.
Yeah. So, you know, we have a lot of war.
Yeah, but we look back at the trend line and we've always had newer vehicles. We always trade about the time they hit a hundred thousand. And every year we're looking at, you know, twenty-six hundred, twenty-eight hundred.
Well, you're, you're always is a little bit, I mean, it hasn't always been that.
Well, yeah, the year before it wasn't, but those two years.
Twenty-six, twenty-eight.
That's a regret. That one's something we're gonna regret.
And, I mean, I, I had originally knocked it back two hundred dollars just trying to be conservative, um, but, you know, I mean, you don't know. I mean, if you look at the averages in the last two out of three years, they've, you know, one was fourteen hundred the first year and twenty-six hundred and twenty-eight hundred. So, you know, I didn't mind knocking it back a couple hundred, but, you, you know, you, you do have newer cars. The guys take good care of them and the maintenance has been minimal, so. And the Tahoe is. It's a crapshoot. Well, yeah, I mean, if, if that, if that stays around another year, then certainly I'd wanna keep that up.
If that stays around, if the Tahoe stays around, then that number has to go up.
And when you, when you keep it around another year, you're going to, it, it's gonna be somewhere between ninety and ninety-five thousand miles on it now when we get rid of it. If you keep it over a hundred thousand, that's sixteen thousand you're gonna get, it's gonna get down to about ten, so.
Okay. Is there any point of asking about, um, lights, CMP lights of the chief while he's here or is that stuff we covered yesterday?
He, he's the one that did all the work on.
I know, it was on a different budget thing, but.
But that, it's the right time, cause he's sitting right here.
Do you have any input on the CMP lights where we stand on a number that's accurate?
Though we agree to disagree.
Yeah.
I say we've got about two twenty-five, they had us for two forty-nine. We're working on that. Uh, Stacy and I, Scott, Bigford and I are gonna be going around and documenting all the poles where they are, taking pictures, emailing them to the E M A office to which they will then put them on their map and then we'll get a copy of that. And somehow or other we'll get it on the G I S system within Rockport's, uh, walls. So yes, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a darn good cataloguing of what we have.
And you're still anticipating it being a wash? CMP is not gonna give us any money back if they've been charging us?
Oh, they won't give us money back.
But they're, they're, they're gonna be disappointed that they could lose five thousand dollars of revenue they've been charging us for, but, you know, that remains to be seen.
I just, I think the wash was some poles that they weren't counting may fall within the town limits, but some poles.
Yeah, I mean, we're paying for one on the Conway Road, which is in Camden.
Mm-hmm.
I'm concerned it's Camden.
Yeah.
So that's coming off the list. I mean, there's a lot of good things that we found when we did the work, um, and there's still a little bit of work to do, but we're picking away at it.
Are, are you saying that we picked up more lights than we thought we did?
What I had heard at one point, and I'm not sure, one way or the other, was there some lights that are within the town that they haven't been counting as ours, but then there's some lights that are outside of the town that they've been counting as ours. And when we finally got the number good, that in and out would come more to a wash than us losing some.
The lights, but they, they, it's the, one of the challenges, I think, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, is the way they name roads and where they have the locations and that's why they're gonna go.
Yeah, no, it's.
That's why they're gonna go around and get GPS coordinates and pictures and all of that stuff. And then it's, uh, La- 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 LaTisha, what's her name? At E M A is, is the G I S expert and so she's gonna take all that information and plug it in and create a map overlay for where all our streets are, streetlights are. We'll have an, we'll have an overlay of, uh, G, G I S overlay of all our streetlights and poles that, that there are in the poll numbers.
I took, I took a week one time off and on and went every street. Went every street we've got and the best I could do, even including some down by Taylor Allens that I think might be ours or his, I don't know, was two twenty-five. I mean, I couldn't find two forty-nine, so. I don't know what's going on, but we're, we're working on it, cause it's a little pet, little pet peeve of mine. That, that list of the lights on each street had street names, not like Simonton that turns into Park Street or Wiley that turns into Main Street, but they were names that we don't even ha, you know, don't even connect to ours. Chestnut Street is actually the one on the corner of Russell Avenue and Callowood. Yeah. Route one's got three different names and none of them are commercial street.
Mm-hmm.
Or Route one. Now, they, they've used old map names and they've just, they're happy with doing that because nobody's ever asked them to change them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm asking them to change them, cause it doesn't make any sense. Um, you know, it's like the ones on the bridge. I mean, I don't know how long they've been out or how long since the ice storm.
Since the storm lasted.
But we're paying for those every year. I've been complaining about the one at this end for a year. I know. Yeah, I'm sure Craig's got the list of them all. And I, I mentioned it with him. I've gone back as far as September to call it in and it's still, either can't be fixed, cause the other one is broken and down. I don't know, but that's.
But then stop charging us.
Those two li, those two lights apiece are, are almost five hundred dollars times however many years you, we've been not having them because they're broken.
The, the challenge is they charge whether they work or not.
Oh, okay.
You know, so they, they, yeah, they don't have, I think it has to do with their billing or whatever, but if, if. It doesn't matter if it's on or off. It's our responsibility to let them know that it's not working, cause they're gonna still charge us for them whether they're on or off.
They didn't, they didn't like to see dayburners because it costs them money.
Yeah, they'll fix those right away.
Not wanting.
Except for the one on Main Street, but.
Not wanting to prolong anything, but I did have one question about the fuel.
Yeah, that's at my fingers right now.
There, there again, the numbers that we got in, in December, and even the current ones that you provided here, I was missing December, January and February's bill because we don't get them on time from Camden. So I'm looking at about ninety-one or ninety-two hundred dollars actually expended.
Rather than six.
Rather than six thousand.
Gotcha.
So, you know, and I did my. They actually expended through when? The end of February.
The end of January.
Uh, well, I, yes, right, the end of January, but I, using about a thousand to eleven hundred dollars a month, I added that on for the February number, even though we don't have it. So it's about a nine thousand dollar figure for the first nine months of the year, ninety-three hundred maybe.
Nine, for nine months?
Thirteen is skinny.
Well, through, through February, right, sorry, through eight.
I'm sorry, what are you, what are we talking about?
Which line?
Oh, the gasoline line. So, and, and there again, I mean, at the, at the number of the time I asked Megan to, to contact the town office in Camden and we were being charged two dollars and forty cents a gallon. That has since gone down to a dollar seventy-nine, uh, in the latest billing that I signed for the other day. So, you know, I had lowered, I had lowered my numbers down to two twenty-three, uh, not knowing that it was gonna get down to one seventy-nine. So, I mean, I, I'm happy knocking it down to two-ten a gallon for sixty-nine hundred and fifty gallons, which is what I average. I mean, I've got a twenty-two-year rolling history of mileage in gas, uh, so that's, and I use the five years, the preceding five years, to come up with a number. So sixty-nine hundred and fifty gallons at two-ten a gallon is about fourteen.
Five ninety-five.
Which, you know, I'm happy with, but I think it was a squeeze to do it anymore.
Cause I just took your ninety-one hundred divided by the eight months multiplied by twelve and came out thirteen-six-fifty, which is almost exactly what the town manager put in there.
The town manager's just guessed.
You're not supposed to admit.
The town manager just took a, just took a guess.
He knows his numbers.
I, I'm, I'm, you know, I think, um, you know, I think the four- fourteen-five-ninety-five is probably a, a reasonable number.
Wait, wait a minute, what number was that?
Fourteen-five-ninety-five.
Where is that number?
This is the new mark.
The new item.
Two dollars and ten cents a gallon.
Okay, cause that's not, it's not in the book.
It's a new one.
It may continue at the dollar seventy, whatever it is, but we don't know that.
It has just started creeping up a little, yeah, but.
So it gives us some wiggle room to go up if it does without getting in trouble?
In worst-case scenario, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Did our friends at Camden pull a slight CMP in that, in that the, um, were they charging us a, a given amount above two dollars? Because that's what they bought the lot at, or because they just didn't get around to changing it until we asked them, hey, what is?
I, I think they change it when they get their new load, which is standard.
Which is reasonable, so they'll get five thousand gallons in or whatever and do it at that, thank you.
And my only thing was a worst-case scenario spike up in the price of gas. We've got mechanisms that will allow for your cruisers to always be full, right?
Yeah, they're always gonna have gas in them.
Yeah.
They're gonna come to your house?
Funny you mention that.
You can siphon it off of my, it's not gonna get you far.
I found a letter from seventy-nine from Carl Bentley to Forrest that says, you know, "Due to the oil problems and gasoline going way sky high, you should stop driving your cars, but don't tell anybody." I still have that.
Oh, that's hysterical.
As been said.
We're only gonna give you ten gallons at a time.
Well, now you've said that on TV, so that's just not gonna work.
You know, it's, it, some of the stuff I found is funny, I mean, sort of.
No more hot chases across town lines.
Are we done with the police?
Thank you.
I hope.
Thank you.
Um, I think we still got, before he's done, we gotta go to animal control. Which is another page, one oh-seven.
Pay it.
Well, considering one of my guys got bit the other day, cause he was picking up a dog, I think probably that'd be a good idea.
Giving him a three percent pay raise too.
Oh.
Is your man all right?
That's right, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to, I had one more question on the police.
Too late.
You've got him at a four percent increase.
Right, because there were, there were three, there were three, uh, the, three areas that were still, using the la- the, the other number, the numbers we collected before, uh, there were three areas that were, were still under budgeted, uh, or, uh, under, uh, budgeting in police, public works and, uh, what was the other one?
Assistant town clerk.
Assistant town clerk, w- it comes in at under.
To the comparables?
Yeah, to, to the comparables, and it doesn't bring us up to that number, but it helps work it up a, a little bit further.
Okay, now, back to public safety and how is your officer that got?
Oh, he's, he's doing fine, it was.
And were they able to prove that the dog had, it was maybe shot?
Right, no, no, he startled the dog, it just barely, you know, broke his skin, but we sent him to Health Connections, did all the proper things and all's well that ends well.
Good.
And we know the dog isn't rabid.
Correct.
Hungry, but not rabid.
Yeah, it was a start, it was more of a.
Was a nip, it wasn't a, take a chunk out of it.
Now we're onto fire.
Now we can go to fire.
Oh, we're good, okay.
You had any other questions about animal control?
I'm not complaining, I'm just.
Which way is fire?
Okay.
Eight ninety-nine.
We are back on time.
Don't jinx it.
You see how those things?
Jason, how are you?
He was in, he was in and he went out, so he's around.
Wow, we're ahead of schedule.
If this goes quick, I'll poke.
Yeah, go right ahead.
So I'd like you guys to explain the, uh, the officer stipends, even though I know we've talked about it and in the past I wanted to. And the, the officer stipends compared to the station coverage stipends, um, how, how is that, how does that work?
So the station coverage is to just when, to cover the station when Jason is off, so that we have somebody that's, that their responsibility is to be there to do burn permits and be in the station for a certain period of time on days where Jason is unavailable. Off of training, on vacations, uh, other times, correct?
Correct.
Yep. And the officer stipends is an incentive to try and keep officers, you know, I, maybe I do, maybe I don't, but you have to explain, but are, we, we're beating the curve when it comes to firefighters, um, and with response times and resp- and numbers of firefighters, volunteers that are going out and, and, uh, serving the community. And what, some of the things we need to do to keep that up is to give them the incentive of, you'll notice that they were given a three percent increase just like every other employee, um, or that's what I'm recommending. And then the officer stipends is a way of, 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 uh, compensating some of the officers who take leadership roles and to, 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 to give them a little bit more money to, to say, okay, provide some more leadership in the department. You know, step up your game and, and, which they're already doing, but recognizing them with a little, with a little bit of extra cash beyond just the normal, um, pace for the calls that they go to. And so that was the, the, um, uh, that, that's what the chief came up with and I totally agree with that. It's, uh, if we didn't have the level of service we have currently from the volunteers, the fire department budget would be twice or possibly three times what it is.
On that exact vein, I'm not comfortable with a zero percent increase in what we pay the volunteers unless, Chief, you can explain to me why.
Oh, it's, it's, we'll pay them, um, they're gonna.
I know it's on like a per hour type thing and you're doing estimations, but shouldn't.
They, they are getting a three percent in reas- the officer statements were included in the volunteer pay line prior to this fiscal, this upcoming fiscal year. So when you take that seven thousand dollars out of the thirty-four thousand that's there, and then you add three percent to that, you come back to thirty-four thousand.
It was all in one line before, I had, in the first two years I had asked to have it all separated and it wasn't, I sat down with Megan. So the stipends were there, they were always there, they may not been where they are for my two assistant chiefs, but there was always a stipend for the chiefs, the lieutenants and the secretary. So they've always had something there, um, but I asked to separate it out so that we can physically see each category and the same with the station coverage. So we've just separated it first, clumping it all into just, because their salary is not the same as their station coverage or stipend, it's all separate. So that's why you're now seeing it as different lines.
But I can be rest assured that the volunteers, not the leadership necessarily, these officers, but Tyler versus David Leighton, Tyler's still gonna realize his hard work and effort.
Correct.
As a volunteer is rewarded in the same, okay, cool. That's, I just, we talk about how great they are all the time, I just didn't want them to not be recognized as a worth.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, there's a, a couple other items in here, uh, one of the things, I don't know if you remember, I'm, I'm sure you do, uh, but the budget committee may not be aware of the, um, uh, safety harnesses that were donated by, from.
Anonymous donor.
Oh, and not, oh, it's, now it's anonymous? It's an anonymous donor donated a bunch of, uh, uh, harnesses, which are for rescue of, of fire, firefighter rescue.
The harnesses that are, they're sewn into the gear of the firefighter where if they need to clip into a ladder or if they have to bail out of a building, it's a harness that goes around their gear.
It's like a climbing.
And we had a fire department that donated fifty of them, cause they switched their gear, a large department. We took out the best twenty that we felt that we could use, which was some extra, and then gave the rest to Lincolnville, which they're gonna do the same, so.
So one of the add-ons is we need, uh, what's called a bailout bag that, that will clip into that thing and it's, it's basically, it's a fireproof rope in a bag, so that if they need to bail out of a building, they can clip onto something and then rappel down out of the building. So, and that comes out to about six thousand extra dollars, is that what the number is about?
It's in safety gear.
It's in safety gear.
The bag is, it's an internal bag, it's mounted to the air pack itself, so it's not on the firefighter gear, it's on the air pack that that firefighter's wearing. When they go into that building, if they're on a second floor, something should come up, there's a hook there that they just clip into their belt and they can go out the window. Nothing happens until they reach the handle and squeeze the handle to rappel themselves down and out.
How do you make a fireproof rope?
I wouldn't say it's fireproof, it's fire retardant for a certain timeframe. Hopefully it doesn't take you that long to get out of the window. I know Rockland is one of the, one of the departments, we got the, what, we got this from when we were down there recently, they have it on all of their packs and I talked to their chief and he explained the reasoning behind it, so. And with the harnesses coming, that, those range from anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five to four hundred dollars, depending on the quality of the, so that was a huge donation that we received there.
That's great. Would somebody tell me please what, uh, line twenty-five-ten is about, as well as why it went up ninety-two point four percent?
Twenty-five-ten?
Twenty-five-ten.
W C and blanket.
It's W C and BF, I don't know what those are.
Workers' comp.
Workers' comp and.
It's workers' comp, yep.
And blanket coverage for our volunteer firefighters.
Okay, okay. I don't, well, then once you tell me workers' comp, then I know that it's just gone up, because it's gone up.
Right, uh, the blanket coverage really didn't go up at much.
Jason, are you still doing the, like, people donate money for Indian tanks and then have a name in them? Cause that was like super cool that you were doing that.
We have several of them.
You're okay with your training, we, you and I talked, but tell me one more time, you're okay with the amount of money you've got for training?
We have, uh, several trainings coming up that I still think will fall under that amount. We, over the last two and a half years, have got everybody that is to the level where they need to be state certified. We just, I just got done working with Bureau Labor Standards over about a week timeframe, getting us into a SHAPE program that hopefully will reduce some of our expenses from insurance. We went through that and almost every firefighter but one is at the level where we need to be at this point, so.
Great. Chief, where is the radio, I, I can't remember, where's the radio headphones?
Eighteen thousand.
Where do they go?
Radio equipment.
Okay, cause that was another fairly big, big purchase, yeah, right here, yeah.
Five-five-one-five?
Yeah, that's right, uh, five-five-one-five?
No, it's five-three-nine-five.
Five-three-nine-five, right, for, um, there's a big increase there and that is in, 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 the new engine, E twenty-three, uh, the, when they're in the engine, there's four people in the engine when they go to a fire, they can't hear anything from the radio, cause it's so loud in the truck. And so that, that gives them head, the firefighters headsets, so that they're connected into their radios, so they can talk to each other, cause it's, it's very loud in the cab of the truck. It also, the chief said just today, is that they found that there's a new supplier of that that allows them to, to, uh, to be, um, wireless, so they're not directly plugged in, so.
The driver and the officer in the front seat now, when they get out, they can set the truck up with that headset still on, listening to the radio while they set up the chocks and get the hoses out, and then once they get on the pump panel, they're still plugged into this radio and still able to hear the radio traffic and still have hearing protection at the same time.
So the guy that's working on the truck is, is connected, uh, remotely, um, to the radio. So that, that's, again, it's a safety thing that, you know, with the, with those firefighters, the way to, to keep them and retain them is to make sure that they have goo- the, the best gear that we can give them.
Yeah, it's because we moved it, remember?
No.
We moved it to publicly funded utilities.
Public, the, you, the fire hydrant?
The fire hydrants.
No, I just cut a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I was like, good job, man, that's nice.
We don't need no fake stinking hydrants.
It just moved, okay.
It moved it.
Learned a lot from Bruce.
You cheered him off with your plow, right?
Yeah.
Rick, why did you bump, uh, fifty-five-fifteen safety gear up so much from what Jason had, had asked?
That's the bailout bags.
That's the bailout bags, okay. That came in at, he would've had it in his budget, but it came in after.
The radios and pagers, which one did you say that was under?
It's fifty-three-fifty-six for the headset.
Yeah, you had it under. You had it under safety gear, it's under fifty-three-fifty-six. The radio headsets, the radio headsets actually fall under the current line for radios and pagers, cause we try to maintain two, uh, three to four new pages a year, they're almost four hundred and fifty dollars now, just for a single pager. So we, that's where we put that, headset was under that one.
That's why that one keeps that so bad.
I have, believe, one last question, can you just talk about, um, your gasoline-consuming vehicles versus your diesel ones?
Yep.
And just your general fuel consumption?
The pickup truck, the Jeep and, uh, four generators, our chainsaws, the two, um, extrication pumps, three, uh, salvage pumps, so all of that uses gasoline.
And then your big trucks are your diesels and they're only really operating kind of a minimalish amount, they're sitting.
Depending on, nothing for a week or, or eight hours straight, it depends.
Are they running when you're out at a fire, cause they're powering stuff?
Absolutely. Wintertime, they're definitely running just to keep everything from freezing, well, hopefully. The new truck, the new truck, we, uh, one of the big investments, we put two, um, heat blowers on it this time versus the heat pans. The blowers actually blow heat onto the pump all the time versus just a shield underneath.
Oh, okay.
And we found it's worked out much more efficiently. And we, with the new truck committee, we've already put some things on paper and one of the things to have built into the new truck is the headsets and stuff of that nature.
The new truck?
Three years down the road.
There's always a next one.
There's always another truck.
There's always another.
Jason, how many vendors or fire trucks are there? I don't think there are many.
There's at least nine out there that I can think of, but there's really only three that compete.
Okay.
You good?
Oh, I think so.
EMA is there?
Oh, I see.
EMA, this way? Okay, EMA?
Yep.
This is one you're gonna see a change in?
Aviation fuel?
What do you have aviation fuel for?
Any gasoline.
Oh, he told us that last year.
Some of the pumps require aviation fuel.
Like jet fuel just require top of the line?
It doesn't have, um, ethanol in it?
Two strokes.
Yeah, it, it isn't jet, jet fuel is kerosene, but this is without ethanol, so they don't gum up carburetors, because.
It doesn't, it doesn't eat up the rubber lines.
It's the little cans of the pre-mix, fifty to one, that's seven bucks.
No, we, uh, certain, certain people have access to get to the airport, invite directly from the, the airplane facility. So we'll go down there with the typically two, uh, five-gallon cans and be able to fill up down there.
That's nice, though.
We pay for it, but.
Yeah, you do pay for it.
You're paying less than you would if you had the bio.
Right, and it stay, the, the aviation fuel stays longer, it stays good longer, so if it sits in the, if it sits in the piece of equipment and doesn't get used, it doesn't.
And I would presume it's better for you.
Oh, absolutely, yep.
Okay, are we on one seventeen?
We're on page one seventeen, one eighteen, yep.
We're at, uh, EMA, um, this is one where there's a change, where I put a stipend back in for an EMA director, for Jason, to be the EMA director, and also I put in a, an amount of money for, uh, assistant director. That being, uh, if we approve this, that being Abby. Um, one of the, one of the challenges is if there is an emergency, depending on the, the, the type of emergency, Jason may be doing fire stuff and we may need somebody to be the, the EMA director while he's out doing his fire stuff. It's a, it, it is a common problem, particularly in smaller departments, where you have, um, a sm- smaller department. or the police chief, that they can't do both. So, I know this was cut previously due to the hiring procedure thing, but Jason has been working very hard on getting our NIMS compliance up to, up to speed, he speaks NIMS, he speaks the emergency management stuff. It's part of, it's part of being a firefighter, they speak all those codes and languages, so we're, and also, what we're also working on with Jason as well, as part of this whole piece, is making Jason being more responsible for the, one thing that the fire department does really well is training, internal training, making Jason be through E M A and everything else, is being the training officer for us, and making sure that all our departments maintain their training, do the proper training, keep the right records, and get us compliant in the SHAPE program and our, to get our workers' comp rate down. So, I put that money in here as a, as a stipend for Jason, and then also for an assistant, Abby, because theoretically, the types of emergencies that either of them would be involved in wouldn't be the same.
Unless the harbor catches fire.
Yeah, unless the harbor catches fire. I mean, Abby's already partly trained in that, in that, in that stuff.
Is the training money that you've got down here to help Abby get trained more specifically?
Yes, yep.
A quick question, I noticed that under each column, there is, for each section, it adds up, except for what you just put in there, there's fifteen hundred in one line, five hundred in the other.
Oh, yeah, yep.
So, that should be two thousand down below, not five hundred.
For some reason, it didn't make the good catch, thank you.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I wasn't aware that there was going to be an assistant E M A director, but Craig, having been the E M A director before Jason assumed the duties, and is already trained as such, perhaps, could you be thrown into the consideration, because he's already there instead of needing to be trained?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, no, I just want to throw his name out there.
Does it add up?
I'm trying, I'm checking. I think it comes down to an arm wrestling competition, first of all.
Yeah. With the dance-off, I like, I like Tracy's dance-off.
It's a thousand less.
Fundraiser.
Um...
What's it all?
The final total's four thousand.
They should be thirty-five seventy.
So, yeah, so you got that one, Megan?
Yep.
Quick question.
I'm sorry.
Is the E M A thing just during working hours, or is it like, round-the-clock thing?
It's, when the E M A, much of the work is done during worker, working hours.
But if there was an emergency at midnight tonight?
Well, unless we schedule the...
Or schedule the emergency.
Often, the emergencies don't happen during the regular workday.
And then, follow-up question.
Thank you, Jeff.
Is Abby, like, is she like a Rockport, living in Rockport person?
No.
Because it would seem to me that if Jason is busy, and there was an emergency during non-working hours, you would want someone who lives in Rockport, who could get here like that, to be the person who is the assistant.
Well, I mean, Jason doesn't live in town either.
Well, I know, but that would be another reason why you would want the secondary to be a person.
Would you like the job?
Oh, no, no, that's not what I'm saying.
We'll work with you.
Five hundred bucks towards the trip.
Okay, one, one at a time, one at a time. Did I, I'm... Finish your thoughts?
It just seems to me that, I mean, if you were in a situation where you needed someone, you would want someone in town.
That, that type of emergency that would trigger emergency management is not something that is like, in ten or fifteen minutes, it's, you know, there's, we have the emergency responders will, that will respond to that immediate piece.
It's management of it.
It's a management of it.
If you're activating E M A, it's usually an hour to two to four hours after the initial event. It's getting them in, they're the ones that are gonna coordinate, we need to get supplies in, we need to get big trucks in, we need to get water in, we have to get this in, it's hours after the initial event. It's not something that's, when the tone goes off, that's not when it's activated.
Okay.
I have two comments. The first comment is, is I really am happy to see this back. This, this, I had asked about this last year, and where it went, and what we were gonna do, so I'm really glad to see it back. And my other comment is, is as we're reminded, when we look at the charter, our town manager makes personnel decisions, so we're gonna have to trust that he chooses the right personnel for the right job. I just want everybody to know that it's not up to any of us, sitting over here or over there, to tell the town manager who he should put in what position, it's his job to do that.
That wasn't my intent.
I know, and I'm just saying, it's just, I, it's something we, we at a select board have to remind ourselves on a regular basis, that it's not for us to say who should do something or shouldn't do something, it's his job to do.
I was just food for thought.
Okay.
And it was a good question.
One other question that I have, one thousand dollars for radios, is that two radios, or...
We're gonna, the one in the fire station right now is nine years old, we're gonna upgrade that one, and possibly the one down at the harbor as well, and that also gives us an extra portable, not this year, but the following year.
What happened to the one that we bought back in tall thirteen? I remember the discussion on that, because the radio that Craig had at the time weren't, wasn't syncing anymore with E M A down in, that place down there, Rockland, where the county E M A is.
Ray says.
Ray says.
Ray.
Yeah, what happened to that radio?
That one is in Craig's car. Asked and answered.
Yeah.
Do I need to say it?
It's, no, no, you don't.
Okay. If nothing, we can redeploy it.
Okay.
Put it in Ab's car.
Yeah, okay. Moving right along. Done with that?
Uh, we're done with that part of it.
Okay.
Now, we can go on to the public safety building and West Rockport Fire Station.
So, where do they, where's he?
Which one?
Okay. Public Safety Building?
It's there, this one will be done. I'll read on the second night.
Okay.
Yeah, because the times are here.
Just to ask Owen's question, answer Owen's question before he asks it, where did the custodian go? The custodian is now contracted in cleaning services.
And mowing?
Yeah.
Mark and I split duties, I do it one week, he does it the other week.
Mowing is up, up a lot.
The red snapper.
Do we sell tickets to when Mark is mowing? Because I might wanna see that.
Razor.
Does he do it in uniform?
So, that's, that's more maintenance that we're not...
Food and groceries down thirty-seven and a half percent, is that because, because of the L D one, or is that, is that...
Which, where are you?
Five oh oh five.
Yeah, I...
That amount's not, the used amount, we're over twelve hundred, thirteen hundred, aren't we?
Yeah, but it was after you said...
Oh, there it is. We, the usage is over twelve hundred right now, but...
Right, but my number is due to the L D one. If it's in red, it's in red, that means it was just an L D one.
When I wrote my notes, I was worried.
Yep. Yours did come up with, with a, it's in red, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, it's just a cut for, just due to L D one.
Now, I know you took out climate event system, which was the twenty-nine thousand.
I also took out the painting, there's painting in that budget.
Yeah.
I took that out, and also the painting supplies, painting supply line?
Yep.
Unless Owen wants to come over and paint that too, and we'll, oh, you and Owen, I guess it's the two of you at the painting party.
Yeah.
I thought you were clear. At this point, we oughta start checking their references.
Yeah, yeah.
What were you considering under construction renovation? Uh, the front door for the fire department's gonna need to be replaced, the bottom's starting to rust out. We replaced police departments this year, a brand-new lock.
And door.
And the new door frame was all completed. Fire department's, the lower section's starting to rust out in spots, so that's gonna have to, so that's why we put that in.
Is there any money left in this year's budget to do that? I mean, because it says you've only spent a thousand, that may be incorrect.
Yeah, no, no, that's in, that's as of, that's as of December.
So, just for that, for the police department's door, it was the thirty-five hundred for this year?
Oh, no, there was more, we just used...
Give me a fire, do you emit a fire downstairs?
Yeah, do you emit a fire for the basement?
Yeah.
Um, this is only, this is only, this is only to December, that's why there's stuff that's missing.
It's up to fifteen hundred.
So, they've spent fifteen hundred, but, yeah, can you, can you squeeze any more out of that?
It's possible.
If there's money left, then absolutely.
Yeah, because I don't want, because that's the regular door that people walk through, right? Not one of the big doors.
Yeah, it's the front main door.
I have a question.
When do you anticipate your next generator servicing?
Once a year.
Yeah, every year.
Every year.
And we haven't done it thus far, or is it another Shellgain line, it's a different line I should be looking at?
It's scheduled.
When I, when I took over, I didn't realize that it wasn't being done every year, I had checked the market, he wasn't sure either, and when I checked into it, it had not been serviced. It's something that, it's the lifeguard of that building, and when the power goes out, which we found out in the middle of a torrential downpour, that huge storm of the power got knocked out, we had no power, and the battery in there was original, so.
Our quest, thank God, opened up for us and gave us a battery, we were able to get it
running, get the building back online, so it's inexpensive, because it's a big, you know, propane-fired.
Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not at all questioning that number that you put in.
It had never been, no, it had never been on, it's gonna be on a yearly cycle.
But we'll see it, okay.
Every year, they'll come automatically.
No, I mean, that's smart, it makes complete sense.
Absolutely.
Will it get a line number, Megan, or it will, okay.
And that's set up so it comes on?
As soon as the power goes off, I think, I don't know.
But it cycles on?
It's like a two...
Not even?
Like a two-second clicking.
Yeah, it's pretty much within, within five to ten seconds.
But it, it cycles to check it?
It turns on every, so, every Sunday, it turns on for, mine's ten minutes at home, I think this one's about the same.
About two-twenty in the afternoon, or two-forty.
Random follow-up question, you would cut a generator out of the town office budget?
Of the town office budget.
I have a question, has anyone given any thought to, it'll probably be expensive, a power bundle that could be jacked off of the fire station's generator and spooled out to the town office?
A big extension cord?
Like the big one at the harbor.
I mean, it's, it's an extension cord on crack, I mean...
Yeah, right.
Pretty big, girfy.
I said to Rick, I've said to Rick for the last two years, I'm a proponent, that without question, the town office should have a generator, because what happens is when the power goes over there...
The Wi-Fi, the internet.
Mark and I, we lose internet unless we can sit in our truck, so it doesn't just affect them, it affects all of us, and it's, it's an important thing.
I think when the addition was done onto our building, there was talk about putting something more central that could take care of both places, it would be a bigger piece, but it didn't happen for financial reasons.
But that's something to consider, there's the town office.
Now that I'm thinking about it, those cords are actually relatively expensive, too.
Oh, the copper, the four-oh?
The big ones.
You need a two-oh or a four-oh to, to the amperage drop.
They're big, and the length.
Buy a generator, that's why you buy a generator.
Probably buy a generator for it.
Safer.
And, and by the way, the conversation you had yesterday that I heard while I was driving back up from Portland, it's, your, your interlock cost on a generator input is not much, so it's not a scary number. There was some talk about wiring for generators, and it's, you know, cut that by eighty percent in your head, and that's reality.
So, you were live-streaming us?
Yeah.
Wow.
Is that, is that safe?
I was listening to you.
Believe me, you are not that exciting. Particularly when it comes between staying on the road and...
When we get to the end, I have a feel-good, no-cost story about the building, if anybody cares.
Yes.
I have a question, Rick.
Mm-hmm.
Line item thirty-six-oh-six, building and structure R and M, which I presume is something about maintenance.
Repair and maintenance.
Okay, and then seventy-two-fifteen, the construction renovation, what's the difference between the two line items?
The thirty-six-oh-six, repair and maintenance, that is, that's basically the painting, it goes in there?
So, it's not the door, the door comes out down below?
The door came, is in another line, where's the door in?
That's under seventy-two-fifteen, is what I think so.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so...
That's the, that would be the hourly pay for the painters to come in, scrape the entire building, all the door frames, the window frames, the trim, both sides, all the four sides of the building.
Uh-huh.
So, that's the actual hourly pay for them to do the work.
Well, you had twenty-five hundred in for this year. Think you wanted to paint it.
Thirty-six-oh-six.
But that's for...
That's the painting you wanted?
No, that, I mean, that's where painting would, is going this year.
Yep.
But in this year's line, I don't remember what it is, what's, what it was there for this year.
Believe me, if you can get that building scraped and painted for twenty-five hundred, jump on it.
I know, I want the name of the painter.
That door of mine's about to repair and maintenance, but I don't know.
I think you're painting it.
That's why you have grit.
Yeah.
It's just a trim. It's too black and red.
Oh, yeah, it's true, you're right.
I'm just learning, just because I've never had to build a fire.
Right.
Yeah, you are.
I'm not sure what, what's, at this point...
Yeah, he's already been paid.
There's been six hundred and thirty dollars spent out of that line since December thirty-first.
So, on top of the number that shows here.
And the repair and maintenance, the painting is just the trim, correct?
Just the trim.
Mm-hmm.
Around the fire bay doors and one of Mark's windows, it's really chipped up, so...
Because the bill will be over with some black paint.
I think it's white.
And you'll clearcoat it, right?
We keep volunteering bill for things.
Need anything else for public safety?
Yeah.
Oh, wait a minute, she's...
But Stevie, hold on, Stevie, Stevie, yeah. Stevie, go ahead.
Oh, I thought you said, hold on, okay. No, I...
There was a comma.
There was a comma, okay, not a semicolon. I guess it comes back to the elephant in the room, which we talked about last night,
Oh, I thought you said, hold on, okay. No, I.
There was a comma.
There was a comma, okay, not a semicolon. I guess it comes back to the elephant in the room, which we talked about last night, and it comes back to one of my things in terms of you with training and me with employee safety, going back to the library issues with mold or potential, and I understand, so that, that, is that under seventy-two oh six, that's the knockout for fixing the, the problems in the?
The plume event system, yeah.
Yep. So it's gonna get, just keeps getting kicked down the road every year, right?
Well, it wasn't even on the budget last year, so we've made an improvement.
No, because it's not there either. I mean, Mark just brought it up, I don't know how many years.
It got put in, but I took it out.
Okay.
It actually should be, I didn't, I took it out.
If I remember their rationale was.
Took it out last year, too.
That no one sleeps in that building, they don't do the, the whole, you're there all the time.
Okay. But I mean, I mean, I mean, we, we've had other safety issues with employees being in buildings that they don't sleep in, or they don't, they're not there.
Good point.
But we also have to balance it between what we just talked about with public safety. Where they do sleep in that building and have more vehicles than just the three that, I mean.
Public Works.
Yeah, oh, Public Works, I'm sorry, you know, so.
Would it be a nice-to-have? Yes, it would.
Yeah, I, and I agree, I just, this year, we're gonna have to balance that and think about how we're gonna be able to attend to either one of those things.
Right.
Can I ask a question, Rick? You cut that seventy-two oh six infrastructure improvements, and that's not in red, so you cut that pre-LD one?
No, it should be in red.
Okay. I was just gonna ask the rationale, pre-LD one for cutting it, but.
Were there any other infrastructure improvements that we would need to consider for this year?
That, that was just the, um.
Only thing we were gonna do.
That was, the only thing that was on there was the plume.
Okay, I, I'm still, I'm still back there, I understand, I do understand money, I do a budget at home, too, but I also feel like this was never brought up because it wasn't a potential issue, and when you talk about the public safety garage, and I think Tracy, one of you mentioned the idea of encapsulating perhaps the room or, or whatever, you know, where they spend all the time, because that's so much a larger space. But, Mark, can you, maybe if, Mark, can you explain, because you've brought this up, I mean, I've been on the budget committee, I don't know how many times, and it seems like every single year, this is constantly brought up, and then it just gets, well, there's no money, and it is a huge chunk of money.
Conversely, I do have people who periodically sleep in there.
Yeah.
When they get off work in the morning, if they live in Jefferson, they stay there and sleep for three hours before they go to port upstairs in, in the bunk room. And have that often, but to say that nobody sleeps there is inaccurate. We don't always have people in that room, in our side of the building, and it's much better with the new engines, I will admit that, now that the old flat faces are gone, but there is still fumes that circulate through. I just wanted to bring it up so that it eventually will get, and I believe it will, I think Rick has a plan to put it in place with other infrastructure improvements, and I, I just brought it up back then to get the ball rolling, because I think it's something that is beneficial, most everybody else, I think Camden has, Rockland has, and most of the places.
Most departments have them.
And they don't necessarily have people sleeping in those spaces either, so.
Well, and I guess my, my point is too, it's, it's always going to be that number or higher for a one-time expenditure, so, so is there no method, I mean, I forget how many years this has been that I've heard this on the budget committee, where you're building a reserve or something like you do for other large-ticket items, is that, is that a possibility to, so it doesn't come up every year, is this humongous?
That is the way it would be normally handled, would be, it would be part of the capital improvement plan. Would be, the, 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 the select board would look and they'd see all of the capital improvement items that we have on, on our horizon, which there'll be a lot once we get that all done. I mean, I'm guessing it will be a substantial number, and once you start adding in, you know, parking lots and, you know, it, it, all of the, it's the, basically the, the kind of wish list of all of the things that we see that need to be repaired. It will be a big number, a really big number, and this will be one of them, and then the board will have to go through and prioritize and decide which ones, you know, are we gonna move forward, and which ones are the top priorities, which are coming up, and but we need that, we need to, to develop that plan. Unfortunately, you know, with switches and staffing, we kind of got off track of getting that done this year, that was the hope, we would get that done this year, and that didn't happen, so.
And there are no OSHA is, issues with this, then, I take it?
No.
No. I mean, there'd have to be OSHA issues with the Public Works Building. I mean, if there were issues, we would have it for both buildings.
Here's a quick one in building on what Stevie said, and it's just kind of a food for thought, you don't have to expand on it heavily now, um, it seems like that specifically may be a ripe-for-grant health and safety thing, and have you either come across any grant opportunities that could help us bring that down?
You get phone calls, I get phone calls multiple times a year, you can write grants, but we've done it, I've done one, and once you write a grant, you get three hundred phone calls a year from people. It turns into a mess, and we didn't get approved for the one that I put in for.
That's another thing that has not been necessarily in Jason and I's ballpark, is Tom Ford, when he was there the planner, always wrote the grants.
Right, right.
For Bill, and Jamie now has that in, and that would, you know, because that was the, the direction the town wanted to go prior to your arrival, is that was what his job was.
My, you know, my experience with, um.
Finding them, or just helping you all fill them out?
Build it both.
I've known of several departments that have looked for, for grants for plume event systems, and they, they haven't been, it's a hard one to get, it doesn't.
It's not a big, it's not a common.
Yeah, it's.
Like fire prevention, like you can write a grant, like I just got sixty-two hundred dollars for fire prevention, but for a plum event, there's very far few and in-between, and, you know, I'm sure there's a hundred departments that put in for it a year, so.
Probably because they expect that you do it, so it's time for us to do it. And I think it, twenty-nine is a, is an odd sort of number, because it falls short of, oh my God, we have to do a, a set aside, and, oh, it's a big number and it's one thing, it, I mean, the reason it got cut is because it's one thing. And it's easy to do it, but it's in red properly when this, these are printed out, and we'll look at it and, and see if we put it back in. But it's just something you ought to have, I mean, that's.
Jason, is it twenty-nine for one bay or for all bays?
It came to like twenty-eight, six, what it is, it's the full system that they mount up in the ceiling, and then the rails and three drops to go to each one of the three trucks.
Okay, and, and does West Rockport also need something like this?
No.
There's no staff there.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want the ceiling to fall in.
Wouldn't have room for the.
I said, you don't have room.
No.
That would take up more of the six inches that we don't have.
Be white. I did want, I did want to make a, have a question.
Speaking of West Rockport Fire Station, do we want to move on to that one now?
Jan.
Which way is that?
One oh three, backwards. Yeah, it's dangerous.
So this is new, where we, where we pulled the, the cost of the West Rockport Fire Station out and gave it its own budget, so we, we pulled all of this small, there, most of these are small incidental expenses uh, out of the West Rock, out of the Fire Department budget and created its own budget for West Rockport Fire Station. The one thing you'll see, which is big, is the, an amount in there for the land purchase, uh, to, to potentially buy the land next door, uh, to the fire station for an expansion.
Not Sharon's house. Make that, make that clear, not Sharon's house.
No, I'm across the street.
That's what I meant.
I don't count. And, and yet it would be an interesting site for a fire station. Probably easier to get in.
So, uh, and then the, uh, that would be funded, you know, the, the hope is that the select board will approve funding that using the US, uh, UFB, and that doesn't fall, it doesn't show up on their revenues, because it falls up, it, it comes in under special assessments. So that's on, is it, where is that on, does that show up?
Towards the back.
That's way in the back.
Um, yeah, you just like.
Special assessments?
I see ninety-nine thousand dollars for land purchase as a capital item on the bill, what was the rest of it that you said? Special assessment, uh, doesn't appear here, appears over there.
I know, what page is the special assessment on?
Uh, it's towards the back.
Because that's, that's what people need to see, is the other side of it.
It's one seventy.
Because I, I would have shown it, you know, I thought it would show up as a revenue under, in, in this budget, but because of the way it's being used, we're using UFB, and I don't, I, we'll leave that to Megan to explain, but because it's UFB, it comes in as a special assessment.
Use of UFB.
So yesterday, when Rick went through his PowerPoint, um, in the budget, he has proposed use of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance. Of that hundred and fifty, ninety-nine thousand is for the land purchase, and an additional forty thousand, which you'll see in the library budget next, is for the library engineering. So of this hundred and fifty, the proposal is, is to use that to cover these two big, large items.
Okay, but those are numbers that I don't see on this page someplace, oh, now I see, one fifty, right, 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 got it, okay. Good, thank you.
Are we sure ninety-nine is correct? Because that seems very low.
Yes.
How much is in the UFB?
Uh, two point one million.
This is not.
Roughly.
So the sole purpose of having West Rockport Fire Station on its own, um, department number is because of this land purchase?
And to track its expenses.
Okay. It's easier to track, because I, there's a lot of maintenance that I have to do over there, supplies, cleaning, and because the public safety building over here is both kind of police and fire over here, I'm trying to separate it, so it's not taking from this over to there. Paper towels, toilet paper.
This is gonna be permanent, so that we can keep better track.
It's a separate building, a separate, it's.
Fine, okay. The one thing that I like is only seventy-four bucks to do the lawn mowing, that's not.
You see how much grass there is?
It's a number I can get.
Is someone asleep or something?
You have seen how much grass is.
Yes, I know.
I have a, oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just gonna ask a silly question, um, whatever happened to the old ladder truck, and if you get this property, would that new fire station house the old antique ladder truck?
No. The ladder truck, the nineteen twenty-eight ladder truck is currently sitting, thankfully, to Pembay Oil, and Kim Graffum, it's sitting in the bay over there still. Mike Mariner originally let us put it over there my second year, second year here, and when Pembay took over the building as a lease, um, she has very, 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 very generously allowed us to keep it there. So, there would be no room for that, it's, it's massive, there's just, unless we had a massive donations for a huge department, there's no way we could store it.
And while we're on page one seventy, the special assessments, I just have a question about line R fifty-two under revenues, payments in lieu of taxes. Why did that drop off, why, why was there such a peak in fourteen, fifteen of twenty-two thousand, and then a drop off? It's basically of the own goodwill of the nonprofits operating within the town and saying, you're not asking me to pay taxes, I'm gonna give you some money, so it's like a goodwill gesture on their part, and they just decided not to?
These, they're expended, that's what we've received, that's what we budget.
Oh, and.
Midco Solid Waste is, was, that six thousand was from Midco Solid Waste, and they've upped it for this coming year.
And it's in our budget.
Yeah, they, yeah, I don't remember what it was, but it was in the budget that was approved on December.
So we can, we can bump that up, then?
Yeah.
Well, we, we also, we also got five thousand from Center for.
Furniture Craft.
Yeah, I thought they gave us.
So, so it's starting to add up, we just haven't put the numbers, we haven't plugged the numbers in.
And also, Main Media Workshops is also doing a payment in lieu of taxes also.
The money for Midco Solid Waste shows up in the sanitation budget, there's a payment in lieu of taxes line there, and that's where that shows up.
Oh, so sanitation.
But Owen, I, I do know of several operations that weren't able to or chose not to for a while, and then are again.
We'll look at that number and make sure that that's right.
And it also has to do year to year with how they, each of these operations do, and, and whether the board of directors feels they can.
Yeah, and I was just, I was trying to get a feel for what, you know, are we losing a lot of people?
We'll double-check that, that number and make sure that it's, it's, it's right.
Thank you.
I know you'd asked the question, the Thorn Dyke family had come to an agreement to sell the property, they had gone to a realtor, um, I believe they were around the one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar range, um, but because of their father's love for the fire department in the town, they had offered it to us at a discounted rate of ninety-nine thousand versus what they were gonna get for fair market value.
That seems like a ridiculously good deal for us.
It is.
But that needs to be approved by the voters.
And are we still operating under the general assumption that we would then sell the house off afterwards and recoup some and only keep the land, we're keeping the house as well, and selling a portion of the land that we didn't need? I thought that there was gonna be revenue generated from that.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Potential, not from the house, but behind, uh.
Selling into the glass, the glass people.
There's a piece of the property that we probably don't need, and the, the, um, the, the owner behind may want, may want to purchase some of that.
I almost asked beforehand, but again, that sale would have to go to the voters, too.
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to know anything else about the West Rockport Fire Station? Oh, good, can we go on to the library? Are we ready?
Let's do the library.
Uh, that, that way.
Are we having a bathroom break?
Blown right through bathroom bricks.
So.
I need black coffee.
Keep in mind, the only thing that we really have any control over, really, or any say in, is either the blue or white lines, all of the gray lines are lines that the, um, library committee deals with, those are all programming things. So, uh, pretty much a lot of the budget falls under the library committee, which we get reimbursed for all of the expenditures there.
I do want to make a quick comment, I noticed something just today, um, in the staffing, uh, the deputy director is the adult services librarian as well, so there aren't actually five full-time people, there's four full-time people. It's just a comma thing. Security officers? That's over.
Twenty-two twelve?
Yeah.
Oh, it must be for, to pay for security officers when you have events here.
Here.
Yeah.
And we've never had to deal with that before?
Well, we, I do it, or whoever, you know, we walk around, we make sure the doors are locked.
You're an intimidating guy.
Yeah, I know.
In the event we have to have somebody outside.
Yeah.
Bigger event, and we have to have somebody outside to pay that.
And is that another one of those, uh, what was the term, pass over, cross through?
Pass through.
Pass through ones?
This passes out, because it, it goes to the, the same gentleman that we use for other events, ordinarily, an outside operation, this, this looks like it might be paying herself, but it's paying it off, it, it's paying a retired officer to, to do that function that they're training.
That would be like for the Seafaring Series.
No.
No, we don't do it for the Seafaring Series.
No, I, I, I've never, since I've been here, I've never seen it used, um, for anything, we haven't done anything that large that would require.
Concert coming up, right, is that right?
Yeah, we have a concert coming up on the seventeenth, it's gonna be really good.
So.
The seventeenth?
Yeah, that's Saint Patrick's Day, yeah.
It, it, it's, there's a threshold at which the, the process calls for a security officer.
That's that Irish.
Yeah, it's the Irish.
We can't, yeah, so we aren't gonna have a meeting down here tonight.
No, it's, it's, it's the, the Western roots, no, the, the Irish roots of cowboy music, basically, they're gonna go from Ireland and Scotland to the frontier west, it's gonna be really cool. I mean, these people, no, these people have been on Prairie Home Companion, they've, they've done all kinds of stuff, they've won awards, yeah, it's gonna be really fun. Uh, you just come, it's a suggested donation of ten dollars. Yeah, it's on the seventeenth.
So, getting back to Owen's budget question.
Yeah, can we get back to?
The, uh, there is, by policy, there is, uh, I, I don't remember if it's seventy-five or a hundred people, but when you have upstairs, when you expect more than that, by policy, you have to hire Ken or one of the guys for that, and, and that's what we're, you know, Rick's looking at, saying, oh, concert success, library sponsor, I'll put it in the budget.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if I'll have over a hundred people for that, I haven't had over a hundred people for any event that I've done upstairs yet, hopefully, um, I haven't gotten anybody for that, but if I need to have it, I'll do it now, that's easy.
Question? The, the line seventy-three fifty, heating and cooling, uh, department headed put in ten thousand, which I understand is for an air conditioner, and then you took that out, is, is the current temporary building not air-conditioned at all?
Oh, that's right, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna try and get that out of, the plan is to get that out of this year's budget.
Oh, yeah.
So we have some savings in some other places, so we're gonna get that done this year, this spring.
Uh, I don't need to know who it's for or what it's for, but the college stipend, you're comfortable with, with who that's going to, and it's worthwhile, similar to, to Megan, it's obviously a worthwhile thing for us to be doing.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I, yes. It would be for any of the full-time staff, as far as we had discussed.
Oh, so that's not committed, that's an option people have?
That's an option people have.
Oh, cool.
They, they can, and, you know, in, in these positions also, I mean, we don't, it's not like they get paid a ton of money.
Yeah.
And, and being able to train them, um, so that they can work towards a master's degree, I mean, um, Ben has his master's degree, um, you don't have anybody else, right?
Nobody, nobody at this time, hopefully I will when I hire the, uh, the assistant, the deputy director.
You've got, but you've got undergrads, just not people with a master's in library service sciences, okay.
Just out of curiosity, is, when we're down here in the purchasing contractual services and then over under supplies, we've got building lease in white. I know we're also playing for, like, the plumbing repairs and the wastewater and brush cutting, why aren't those in white as well?
You mean in gray?
No, they're not in gray, because.
There's three different colors.
Right, yeah, oh, that's right.
That's the question, why are there three different colors instead of two?
White and, I don't know why, but white and blue is us.
Yeah.
Is there a difference between what is blue and what is white?
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is.
Explain, one of you explain to him why there are blue lines and gray lines.
Well, no, I get the blue line, gray line, what's the difference between blue line, white line?
Nothing.
Nothing.
The white one should be.
They should either, either blue or the, all the blue should be white. I don't know what happened, why it, it.
It's an Excel thing.
Yeah.
You know what, I think it's good to stand out, though, I mean, it is, it's a new line that was, it went in, and it's a big one.
But every other page is white, except for the FY sixteen seventeen columns, which are blue. Over here, even the town responsible lines that are doing the description in past years are in blue, they should be in white for consistency.
Yes, they should be white.
I'll change them.
There you go.
Way there.
Dan's out better. You know, people at home probably could make, make it this, more to. You know, people at home probably could make, make it more distinct then.
And keep in mind, uh, if you haven't noticed, there's another budget and some, another page, which is for us to, to the upkeep and maintenance of the existing building.
Age one forty-five.
So, those numbers, that budget was, what it cost us to keep that building, we've pickled it pretty much. It's, uh, it's not heated, it's not, oh, the water system's been drained.
No. When we say it's not heated though, I mean, we are keeping the electricity and we have the heat pumps there, so we can go in and turn on the heat if we need to.
But it's, uh, it's basically shut down, the building is shut down, but we still do have to mow the lawns, we have to maintain the building, it is in the center of town and we, you know, we have to, we have to keep it up as, as, as best as we can. So, that's in that, um, the other line. So, those, those items have been removed from here and are in the other budget.
Yeah, I know, and I'm looking at one forty-six. But you said the water's been shut off, but you're budgeting two hundred dollars for water.
Guesses we still have to pay.
You gotta pay that.
Right. There's.
On the water?
Oh, and do we have?
Wastewater is still there.
Turn it off too?
That's at two hundred and that should be.
Is that what it was? Was that two hundred for turning it off? Wasn't it a pain to turn it off?
This is in this year, next year's budget.
Next year's, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not on that.
So, you have wastewater and you have water, you're right. So, there's wastewater and water. Do we water the lawn or something, or water the plants?
Or do you have to have water for the sprinkler system?
In which case.
Oh, the sprinkler system for the building?
There's no sprinkler system.
That may, that may just be a mistake.
Yeah.
Because we had run into that with our E S.
We don't need to beat this horse any dinner than it already is.
But I do have another question.
That can probably come out.
On that page, I'm sorry, can?
I missed that one.
Yes, yeah, yeah, excuse us, she's got a question.
Thirty-six oh-six has a thousand dollars for department head and a hundred dollars for manager, but they both say a hundred percent.
Ooh.
So, is it, it's thirty-six oh-six on, um, the old building, the one Lime Rock Street building. So, that's that thousand dollar difference.
Any.
But did we want that to be a thousand dollar difference?
I don't think so.
See what it says? So, that is supposed to be a thousand dollars. So, there is no difference.
The problem, Tracy, is if you go from a non-existent thing last year, there was nothing there, and you put in any amount, it is an infinite percentage, it's an infinite percentage raise, so.
That's true, you're right.
Megan has just taken up.
But she did.
But it is supposed to be, it is the same, the number is the same. Okay. Well, just the total is not going to be right if we don't get that right. Okay.
I had a quick one if I may. Um, back on page one thirty-four, under the revenues, I know it's in gray, the library reimbursement, so it's not us. I'm just curious, are those all the library cards? What are library reimbursements?
So, so that's all the stuff that you see that's in gray here. Um, what happens is, I submit those bills to the town, Megan actually pays those, then the library committee meets, we get all of those added up each month, and then they cut a check to Megan.
So, that, that ninety-six thousand you're seeing there is the total of all those items in gray?
Yeah.
That will get reimbursed for.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's why they're gray and they're blue, because everything in gray gets passed through to the library committee.
Doesn't it come from the trust or something?
It comes from all kinds of things.
It comes, yeah, well, I mean, the reimbursements to the town are from the monthly warrants that we do, which are the bills that I've submitted to Megan that get paid to the library, I mean, to the town. So, basically, Megan, it's one of, it is one of those pass-through things. Megan pays the bill, the town pays the bill, but then we pay them back.
Then you pay them back, okay.
Um, Megan.
Yes.
I, um, I would love to be able to look at the library's budget and see it broken into what does the library committee pay for and what does the town pay for? And I know it disrupts the nice numeric system that we have.
We can't, I don't think we can do that other than color coding it.
We could, we could.
But, oh, no, I'm, all I'm asking for.
It'll mess up the whole.
No, no, no.
We could, I, I, I could do the, the same titles twice and.
No, 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 let me finish, because all I want is a line added that says, library responsibility, library committee total, town total, for every section. Where, because the eighty-nine thousand dollars that they reimburse us is not going to be the same as adding up all the grays, because there are, there are things I think that don't come to the town.
Right.
Buying books and, um, whatever else, things that come out of the trust. I presume you write your own checks.
No, they still, the bills still go to the town.
They all go through the town.
Okay.
And if you, if you look at the pie chart, it will tell you, Rockport taxpayers are responsible for three hundred and eighteen thousand and the endowments, the grants and the donors is responsible for ninety-seven thousand.
Megan, could I just ask a really?
All right, so that's what I'm looking for, is those two numbers. That's it, thank you.
Could, could you just color code those, the, I, I have some visual problems and could, could maybe the purple be a lighter pink or, could there be more differentiation in those two colors for that, for that chart?
Mm-hmm.
And that's an increase, because Ginny did a five-year, I think, last year, remember I had asked, because all those questions come up at town meeting always about the total library budget, nobody ever understands that twenty, I think that, I think last year it was only twenty-one percent maybe? She did a, a five-year pie chart like that, um, and this year the projected is twenty-three percent, which is almost twenty-five percent, which is almost a quarter. That's probably the building lease. That chunk, right, right, but that's why the, the percentage has changed, because the overall number is bigger and the town is paying that chunk. So, that change, the building lease, makes that, makes that percentage difference. That's would be my guess, that's a big enough number to do that. But it ends up that the, even though that's bigger, the town share you would think would be bigger, you'd think the lot, because the expenses are more because of the building lease. So, the fact that the library committee is putting in a higher percentage towards the total budget is what I was saying.
They're not really, because we removed all the stuff for one Lime Rock Street, so that four thousand, whatever, has come out of there. So, that would increase your percentage.
Okay.
Plus, we've cut some things like, uh, plumbing supplies, maintenance supplies, um, heating, repair, maintenance, because a lot of that's up to our, the person we're leasing the building from.
Okay.
So, there's been a lot of expenses that have been shifted, so that, that pie chart isn't necessarily a correct, a correct visual of what the library is really paying for and what the town is paying for.
And I'm surprised with everything, the bottom line, the increases, well, I shouldn't say as low as it is, but, I mean, it's.
Well, that was one of the things about the move, is that when we, when we started looking at it, the, the cost to do the move was not going to be that great because we were going to make, have savings in other places. And so, ultimately, the cost of the move wasn't that big a, uh, big an expense, because we're saving money, we're more efficient.
Well, and we got the shelving for free.
Right.
We didn't get the shelving for free, we would have been some.
What is that, seventy thousand dollars you said?
I think that's what we've budgeted for the, put a rider on the insurance for, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we got, we got a huge deal.
Congratulations.
And the other thing, could I just, this is probably inappropriate, but it's me. I think the fact that Ben came in to the position as interim director, uh, very short-staffed for almost a year, uh, the move itself, which I've moved libraries before and been in charge of paying to have libraries moved before of similar sizes, I think all of that, uh, and, and the fact that you were the first one with your budget in?
I was the first one with my budget in.
I mean, I, I, you know, I just, I mean, you know how I feel about the library and how I feel about our employees, and I, I just feel it has been an exceptional tribute to the town of Rockport in terms of the staffing you've done, Rick, and even before you, and to, to that staff, I.
Right, you know, I, when, when we were making the recommendation to, to put Ben in, I, I, what, what happened with the move is, was exceptional and, but I wanted it to be clear that we weren't putting him in as the full-time director just based on that.
Right, right.
Because that was, that was pretty, that was exceptional and in itself is worthy, but it was, it was about more than simply that. It was about all of the other things that the library, that, that, the library has achieved in spite of the trials and tribulations there and the move. They've still managed to provide excellent programming, the, the response is great, that people are still using the library, and that's a credit to Ben and the staff and, um, you know, I didn't want that, I didn't want that piece to get lost in the fact.
Right.
The move went incredibly well.
Well, that happened because Rockport turned out.
Yeah.
I mean, I didn't do that alone.
Why is there no item, no entry under main public employees retirement and hasn't been for a couple of years?
Because they have no employees enrolled in the system.
They are allowed not to, or they are not in town employees? How does, how does one get out of there?
A town employee has seven days after the day they're hired to elect to enroll in